Thank you.
Ball's in your court, Dr. Uvalde.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. This is a special governing board meeting. It's a retreat study. And now it's October 27th and it's exactly 4:01. Roll call, please.
Trustee Young.
Present.
Trustee Gardner.
Present.
Trustee Fox.
Present.
Vice President Gross.
Present.
President Uvalde.
I am present. Thank you.
Thank you.
May we rise before the pledge of allegiance if you're able? Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, are there any public comment on agenda items, Superintendent or Aranda?
No public comments, sir.
Okay, and I will turn this over to the superintendent in regards to, oh, let's have the, adopt the agenda first. Adoption of the board agenda.
I'll move to it.
It's been moved by Trustee Gardner, a second by Vice President Gross. Roll call, please.
Trustee Young.
Aye.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Fox.
Aye.
Vice President Gross.
Aye.
President Uvalde.
Aye. Now, let me turn it over to the superintendent for our information item and study. Superintendent Spalding, it's on your hand, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Uvalde. So this is our, the second night, the second of the two-part, well, actually, multi-part series, but two parts this week with Deborah Keyes Wright and wrapping up some of the work we've been doing out of the Governance Core book by Davis Campbell and Michael Follin. And it's kind of fun to reread some of those chapters more recently and even see where conversations last night were headed and picked up again, I think, tonight with some of the content we'll have tonight. So, you know, just ironically, I would just wanted to mention, so Dr. Uvalde and I are on a panel at the CSBA conference with Superintendent Brett McFadden out of Nevada Union High School District. And ironically, what we're going to be doing is a lot like this work here. The workshop is about board superintendent relations. And so we're working now on kind of the PowerPoint and there are a number of items from this process we've done together and from the book that I plan to infuse into slides when we do that. So we'll do a mini version of what we've spent, this group has spent so much more time on.
I'm glad we're having this now then. So we will be both prepared. Okay, this Deborah Keyes Wright.
Yes, yes. All right, thank you. You will be prepared. You guys know this. I will be at the conference. So hopefully, it's not the same time I'm presenting. So I will definitely kind of slide into your session as well. And so I'm going to jump right into the document I'm going to show you that is the work that you sent me, the work we were doing yesterday about coherence, governance coherence, and you did your breakout groups and you sent me the information. And now we'll be able to actually see it on, on, on display here. And let's see, it's four, three, two.
Were you able to get ours, Deborah?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Let me just move it around so I can make it a little bit bigger for you. How does that look for you?
Looks fine.
You can see it? All right, we're in business. Those tech guys, I'm telling you. We, we, yes, we did it. We did it. Okay, here we go. And so that was the assignment. So here's the first groups. I just cut and paste right in. You know, we had the layout where, you know, it was the title, implications, and then how we might operate differently, okay? And so Tony, you and Tony G were the first ones and then group, well, in group one. So you guys want to just read yours off and then what I want your colleagues to do is see if there, you have any clarifying questions, if you would add anything. Yeah.
Well, I'll read it. I mean, I do that. Deborah, can you make it a little bit bigger?
Okay, I sure can. Let me see.
Between aging glaucoma is killing me.
How's that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, our number one assignment was balancing individual core values and the board's unity of purpose. The description of it was that the recognition that the board members are individuals with variety of values, beliefs, personalities, and et cetera. It is imperative that the board work toward a common goal. The implications of that is successful in to unify, successful to unity by reaching your goals.
Right. And what, and how might we operate differently?
How might we operate differently if we would be more cohesive, trusting leader to a more confident board due to success stories? And that, and we need to add more to that, but we will.
You will. And so I'm just making sure it's all up here so everybody can kind of see it. So based upon balancing individual core, what do you, what say you, Boyle? On your, in your workbook on page 50 is where you can write some notes about this as well. So just kind of discuss the, we're reviewing it and we're going to discuss any important concepts that should be included for future study. Anything would you would add or do you have any clarifying questions for the group one who actually put this together? Is there anything you would add, colleagues, as you read this about balancing your core values?
Feel free now, speak up.
Implications. Do you think something else should be?
I'm taking notes for CSBA annual conference. Come on, Dr. Young.
Is it clear to everybody what, what we were trying to say?
Basically, we're saying we have a lot of beliefs and ideas and personality quirks and everything else. And we didn't want that to get in way to, to, to reach the common goal of our, of our, our goal.
I think that we as a board address each one of those descriptions and utilize them to the common goal of the, of the, of what we're wanting to accomplish. So those two things match.
Now, say, say that again. But what I need you guys to do, like from the implications, would you add anything? They're saying successful to unity by reaching your goals. That's what they're saying the implications are of balancing individual core values.
I think we should celebrate after we reached growth. I love to celebrate too. I, it's an accomplishment and knowing the history that I know of the, of the district, I think any goal that has gone its, any vision that has completely gone its whole route and it actually comes into a living document and we see the result, we need to celebrate. Because at least we have shown consistency as a board.
Okay, thank you. Christie, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I do. I think, I think that, that what this, to me, the implication is is because we come to the board with lots of values or different values, beliefs and personalities, that all of them need to come together so that we can talk with kind of one voice in order to reach our goals. We can still hold on to our beliefs and our personalities and our values. It's that coming together that really helps us unify. Like sometimes we have to set aside some things and hold on to others in order to, to meet that goal of, of unity or unifying.
And I think that goes back to what Tony was saying too. Everybody has their own values and beliefs and, and, and just that, you know, core values. But, but we also have the board's, the district's moral imperative as a primary focus on what we have to do. So it's a balancing act.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And we'll be able to, you know, massage this more. What about how might the board operate differently when you're focusing? It says more cohesion, trusting, some of that could have been. What, what would you do differently? Trusting, leading, and more confident?
Now, now Deborah, my question on, my question on that question was, how would this, how might we operate differently? Does that mean different than what we're operating now?
Yeah, just because these, not necessarily all are happening with you guys, but if they were, how would you act differently? Because there needs to be, unless you have, unless you guys are all on the same page with your unity of purpose and your core values and all of that, what else needs to be worked on? How might we operate differently? So just kind of think about what else can we do?
I think we need to have more discussion.
Right.
Yep.
That's what I would say because we, we haven't had the opportunity to really listen to what some of our partners basically have to say.
Yep.
Because we don't take the opportunity or have the opportunity to discuss.
That's what I was hoping you would say.
Yeah. Can we add something that we, we learned from the following, this chapter seven?
You want to add it here? Sure, if it, yes, this is all, and then John, you have your net.
Basically, when a staff recognizes that we do not micro, that, that they feel, they feel.
That's under micromanagement, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
We're not there yet.
I saw that below, okay.
Oh, no. So I wanted to hear from John and then we'll go right there.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm confused with, oh, go back to.
How we operate differently?
Yeah, more cohesive, trusting leaders to cover more.
That should be.
Be more successful stories. I'm, I'm having trouble with that because if this is about distractions and not to have the distractions and this is balancing our individual purposes or whys coming to the board and then trying to take our whys or individual lenses to then meet the unity of the other four members, the board's unity, then I think it's always checking to make sure your why is connecting with whatever we're discussing or going over, that your why is not distracting from going forward with whatever it is we're working on. If this is about distractions. So I don't know what that really means, more cohesive or trusting leaders more. I think it's more about what's your own agenda and whys? And how do you sometimes, does that maybe cloud you coming forward to meet whatever we're discussing with the board? And staying on track with all five of us and not just my why it has to be a certain way. And I've seen this happen.
Okay.
Where someone thinks they're represented just one of the population, just one part of Olayo and that why is clouding up issues for who knows what. And, and that's, that's a distraction.
So setting aside personal agendas?
Yes. I think it means be more specific than more cohesion or trusting leaders. I think it's trusting that we put our own personal things aside and that we're constantly focused on all of the issues or all of the children, all of the population, all of constituencies. If that's.
And that, and that, and like I asked Deborah the question again, I think that speaks to the necessity of having a solid governance core. Because that, that, that really separates the, the personal, your personal issues from, from the, and I go, I keep using this word and it goes back to what Latanya said about the discussion. We need to make sure that our moral imperative is unified. And, and once, and once that's done, then the second, kind of part 1A of that moral imperative is that then that becomes our duty as a board to make sure that is what we deliver to the district. But, but I think it goes back to what Latanya said. I think we have to have that discussion. What is individually, what is your moral imperative? What is it? You know, and, and, and is it mine's? Is it yours? Is it Latanya's? Is it Christie's? Is it Tony's? You know, and, and if that's, if that's the case and that's what we're here to deliver to the district, then that's, that's what our job becomes. It doesn't become anything, you know, butcher, a baker, a taxi cab driver, nothing that. It becomes delivering that, that, that strategic plan to this district and making sure that we have all those approved permits there to do that. And, and, and I think once we get to that, then, then that's kind of the nirvana of a board, of, of school boards.
School boards, right. Stay in focus on the work, you know, and not allowing other distractions or whatever to guide you in your decision-making or influence you.
Because they're going to always be there. They're going to always be out there.
And, and it goes back to when we had training before about focusing on priorities and not hot topics. Hot topics are where you will see where you're not connecting with each other. You're not focusing on the big picture, what's guiding the district, what the, the work that the superintendent and his staff is doing. Or no matter what else is going on, no matter how many discussions about masking or virtual training or vaccination, focus on your priorities. Because the day-to-day stuff is what the superintendent and his staff is going to do. The priorities should know, you should never lose focus on the goal of what you're trying to do. Because those buckets, the work, all of those things fall under. You have to provide a safe learning environment for all children, right? That can be right under, that's in one of the buckets. So that, that's why I said before, when all of these distractions happen, your job as a governing body does not change. You have to allow the super, and you're made aware of it, the superintendent and his staff, they do that day-to-day. They are below that dotted line handling, implementing what you've discussed that needs to be the big picture, the what. And so any, anything else you want to add on this one? You'll have time to massage this again. I just want to kind of get your feedback on there.
So, uh, so.
Go ahead.
So isn't, when I'm reading this, your why is a distraction. So your why is a sidebar. It's not part of the argument. I mean, it's not part of the, the main structure of what you're trying to get done. So the why is a sidebar. So why, why even address a why? When it's not related to, it's just like when you're in a trial. The sidebars don't count. We got to redirect. So as a board, we have to learn how to redirect those whys.
You're exactly right. And that is going to align with your, your board norms, your operating procedures, what you've agreed upon, how you engage with each other. Because yes, you could get off target and start talking about other things. And I, you guys were doing this last night as far as reminding each other. Well, based upon what you read, this is how you address this. And so that's what you just have to be intentional about doing. Not allow the conversations to kind of stray away. Because then it does become my why or my single agenda or, you know, it falls, start falling into those categories. Absolutely. So it need to, yes, you need to redirect. Absolutely. Okay? So, Mr. Gross, I know you have to leave shortly, but let's look at the micromanagement. The implications, micromanagement is an intrusion, damaging, leads to distrust and lack of confidence. So what else would you guys add to that? What else does micromanagement do?
Oh, that just about says it.
I was going to say, I think that kind of covered it, but just in case your colleagues want to add something.
Management. Yeah, I just, what I, I was going to add earlier, it's.
Yes.
Chapter seven alluded to the morale of the staff. And, and that if you're micromanagement, macro manage, the, the staff would be, would be demoralized because if you're getting, getting involved in their, in their work.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Yep, you definitely, micromanagement does impact staff. Absolutely. John, what did you want to add?
Under how we would do it differently, our, our goal is to be the helicopter view or the balcony view. We're not supposed to get stuck in, in the weeds. So we're supposed to trust the cabinet and the superintendent and let them do their jobs. So it comes back to the trust and we can ask questions, but it also kind of goes with the one Bill and I were doing number, oh, was that eight? I think it was eight. Oh, no, nine, expertise, our own personal expertise sometimes with our lenses. But it's, I'd like to just say, stay in your own lane.
I was waiting to say that, John.
But it's, it's not using your expertise to, you know, oh, I'm a teacher, so these teachers should do this. I am a principal. The principal should be doing this. I'm a district human resource person. She should be doing, he should be doing this. It should be trusting that the superintendent is dealing with evaluations and procedures and we have to rely on them to do their jobs based on evaluation and standards and procedure and not get in the way of that. So anyways, I just think that helicopter view and that balcony view is so important, especially with this micromanaging.
Dr. Young.
Dr. Young.
Um, in, in reference, I'm asking just to, Trustee John, in we having a helicopter view or a balcony view? As we're on this helicopter and we see down below that something is going, that something is in the process of happening and we see it before it happens, but we know it's going to happen, what is our responsibility? And who is our responsibility to in order to derail this?
Potential issue?
See is coming through?
My answer personally, which Bill will have to answer this, or Deborah.
I'm asking who, I, I, the question was whoever, answer it for me, please.
I feel that it would be you directly speak with the superintendent and say, I'm very much concerned, privately, I'm very much concerned about X, X, Y, or Z, and this is why I'm concerned. Can you tell me what's in place that I see it going this direction? How are you dealing with this or what's in place that it won't go in that direction? Or why are you letting it go in this direction? And then if you're, to me, that would be, and then maybe have the staff, then he can have his staff or her staff, then also show what direction or why it's doing those, whatever it is you're seeing. So that, so first superintendent, then maybe the district staff through the superintendent to understand what's going on through their lenses, not our helicopter lens. But that's my own two cents. So now I'm going to let Bill or Deborah.
But remember, we only have one employee. We have one employee and that, that, you know, keep that in mind. There he is, right there.
Well, that's why I said go to Bill first.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and last.
Well, I just.
Yeah, I would think that.
I'm the new person on the board, but not new anymore. But a lot of times I'm in the helicopter, you know, because I love to shop. But anyway, I'm in the helicopter. And I see things, you know, and I don't know whether to report them or whether they're worth reporting, but I see sometimes that's a conflict and I know it's going to end up a conflict. So I just sit there and go on shopping sometimes. I'm not going to tell, I'm not, I'm going to be very truthful.
Okay, look, we're.
But that's what I'm, you know, I'm very transparent. I'm going to tell you the truth about how I think about some things.
Okay, now that's out in the, we put it out in the space and superintendent, I'm going to circle back to you after Christie makes her comment because I know you know how to address this, right? Christie?
I, I would, we have one employee who takes care of this and that's the superintendent. And so if, if I see a disaster about to happen, in my mind, they may have everything under control, but my perception may be off. And so I would ask the superintendent and, and go with whatever his explanation is. And if he wants to address the situation, I have to trust that that will happen. I wouldn't talk with anybody else because I don't think that's my, that's not my job. My job, my job actually is to be a board member. And on an individual basis, if I have an issue or if I think is boiling up, I can't talk with the whole board, I'd go directly to the superintendent.
Exactly. But you have to remember, you are only have one pers, one perspective of whatever you're seeing.
Right.
So that's why I always say is you approach your, your staff, the superintendent, and as you pose the question, are you aware, da-da-da-da-da, whatever that is? And he's probably like, yep, this is, got it, got it, got it. Because remember, there are a lot of things going on in the district that the superintendent does not have to inform you about. Because it's his job to handle, put those little fires out, if you will. He knows if it's going to be a big issue and bubble to the top, to the board level, oh, he's going to pull you in. But just remember, we may see something as only our perspective. We only, you know, when you talk about equity and you look at the elephant, you only know one piece of it. But it's the big, he knows what the big elephant is. So just remember, your perspective is what you're seeing, you know? You only see one piece of it and you have to trust that he's handling it. But, so superintendent, what say you?
In all your pain?
I know.
At another times?
You know, I'm reminded of, I'm, I'm going to just, I'm going to share a personal story. And, and it kind of gets to this and, and to number nine. And some of you might remember this from when I was here before. So when my daughter, who's now 21, was 20 months old, right around, I think it was around Easter time, she started falling down a lot. Three months old, we're like, for, we're not sure, she falling down a lot. And turned out she was having seizures, series of seizures, like one after another, after another, after another. So we got her over to, to the hospital in Sacramento and she saw a very gifted pediatric neurologist. And they ran all kinds of tests on her EEGs and, and, you know, CAT scan and, you know, MRI, all these things. And, you know, came up with, you know, came up with if she has a seizure disorder and they have to treat it because every seizure was going to do damage, you know, and every seizure was going to leave, leave some more damage. And she was very young. And so the, the doctor ordered up a medication that had a black box, if you know anything about, like when you go to a pharmacy and there's a black box, lots of medication. It was early in its development and it, and he was starting to use it with pediatric cases, but was always very, very careful. But he knew this to be, in his mind, the very best anti-seizure medication that would also allow the full functioning and development of a child. But when we went to go get the medication, we got a fight from the pharmacist. You know, I can't give you this. There's a black box. So he, the pharmacist had a fight with the neurologist. The neurologist won and she started on this medication. A few days, few days later, she started getting violently sick. Violently sick, throwing up, throwing up, throwing up. And I was convinced that maybe the pharmacist was right, that this was a bad reaction, something horrible was happening to her liver. something horrible was happening to her liver. And I put her in the back of the car, and I drove ninety miles an hour back to the hospital, back to this doctor. And I was hyster- I was, you know, new dad for this little girl, I was hysterical, I was absolutely hysterical. So I was, you know, telling him, ah, you know, you came, you gave us this black box, this is experimental medication, ah. And he very calmly looked at me, and I'll never forget, he, he handled me in a way that I've, that, that was absolutely impressive. He said, I'll tell you what. He said, let me list for you the five main medications we use for, for, uh, pediatric, uh, seizures. I'll give you the, the optimum, the upside, and I'll give you the side effects for each one. And you pick which one that your daughter will be on. So he rattled off, you know, the, the lot of those, the lanterns, you know, blah, 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 he started rattling off the five major, um, anti, anti-seizure medications. All of them had terrible, terrible, terrible side effects, would make her, you know, you know, would, she wouldn't be lucid. She wouldn't, you know, she wouldn't be active, she wouldn't learn, she, you know, she'd be zoned out like a zombie, all these things. He said, so which one do you, which one do you pick? And I said, the one you prescribed. I thought, I was, I was upset, I felt like I was, I was, you know, saving my daughter's life. I was afraid, I was scared, I was trying to do, come in, you know, with my helicopter and, and, you know, and, and look out for her. And I was second guessing a national board certified, well-respected expert, well, you know, very, very well-known pediatric neurologist. And in the end, I chose what he would have chosen. I, I chose what he chose. Turned out that all the sickness and the illness and the fever that she had was a rotavirus, uh, the rotavirus she picked up by being in the hospital for eight days, dealing with the seizures. And that taught me a really important lesson, you know, I, I may have the best of intentions. I certainly have the most investment and interest at heart as a parent in that situation. I, 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 I understand why I reacted the way I did. But he helped me get back to my lane, and he helped me get back to my lane, saying, here, here's my, here's how I made these decisions. You know, but the, the reality was, is he was the doctor and I wasn't. And, and he was the one who had years and years of experience, expert. He, you know, expert witness in a lot of cases, he presents at conferences, you know, nationally board certified, um, very well-respected in the fields, writes, writes articles. And so he's the expert, and so I think what's really important is that, that the person that, that any board selects to be a superintendent, uh, hopefully is, is expert, you know, probably, I mean, I'm not nationally board certified like he is, but, but there has to be that level of trust, there has to be that recognition that, that he or she has got this. And I think it's important to get information, like I appreciate, I had board members call me up, say, hey, I want to give you a heads up. This thing's happening, or this is, you know, this people are talking about this, or this is, this came up in another meeting I was in the other day, you should be aware. Really appreciate that, very important. But I think there'll be some times that there are ways of going about things or decisions that are being made that I and my staff try to bring the, the experiences that we have to it, or have other outcomes or reasons and things we're looking to do that may not be readily apparent, that, you know, that, um, you know, that, that are gonna lead to a better outcome. And if they don't lead to a better outcome, you, you know who to come bark at. Like, you know, and, and if a whole bunch of things don't lead to better outcomes, I mean, you, you, you know, we know how that ends too, so. So anyways, I, I just, I offer it up as, 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 you know, a, a, a learning, a, a very, a major turning point and learning experience for me as a dad, in trying to do what I thought was right and thinking that I knew better, because I was the dad, than, than the neurologist who really also knew better. But he was wise enough and smart enough also to like deal with me and my hysteria, talk me down and, and have me come around to the exact same conclusion he had. And, and in the end, she did really quite well. And she was able to actually get off that medication in a few years, and has been seizure-free, knock on wood, for probably fourteen years.
Wow. Wow, that was impactful story. I, wow. I hope that helped you see, everyone kind of see clearly, you know? We don't know, we're not the experts in this position. I always say, board members are extremely disboard, I should say. Very, um, competent, um, intelligent, brilliant, bright, all those things. Hard stop, not a but, period. The role you're in is governing. And you have to trust that you hire the right person to do the job. But just like your superintendent said, informing, because yes, you guys are in, involved in the community. You may hear of something and it's about, hey, are, were you aware? And that's it, keep it moving. And, and when you're coming there hysterical about, oh my gosh, you have to make sure you take care of this, because this is happening. He could probably just kind of let you, you know, go through all of that, and it's like, okay, now, let me just tell you, this is what I know, and this is what we're doing, we have it handled. And that's why I put in there, trust the process, because there's a process in place that you may not know about. But that's just the anxiety that board members, um, can get when they think something is not being addressed, because you have your constituents pulling your coat tail, because they don't see all the pieces either. So that's just something that you have to just kind of be aware of, that, you know, you may be reactive, and you don't know the whole picture, but it's okay, you come to the superintendent, and when he tells you, I, we've got it, it's under control, we're doing this, you have to, well, would you trust him? That he's doing what he's supposed to do? I would hope so, right? So did that story, I mean, how did that, that make it clear for everyone about when you want something done, it's almost where you have to be careful not to tell him to do it. Like, we need you to do X, Y, Z, I need you to do this, because not one board member can give a directive, it's collective. And so you have to remember, when you have all this information, and you're excited about it, anxious about it, and you go to the superintendent and you tell him, you better do this, you better, mm, no, no. And hopefully the superintendent will have to kind of like, okay, kind of, let's slow this down a little bit. You can share your concerns, but this is my job to do, and you guys have to, I'm not saying you're doing this, but you're saying, board members have to allow the superintendent to do his job, okay?
And by the way, I'm not saying that anybody's been hysterical.
No, 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 that was.
I was hysterical that day, but no, nobody's been, this group has been hysterical with me.
Yeah, yeah, no worries, no worries. Um, how are you doing, Mr. Gross, on your time?
So far, so good.
All right, let, let, let's do this, um, the, uh, representing your constituencies. That was yours too, and, and, and Dr. Uvalde. So, uh, positive relationships, but understands that there are two equal levels of constituencies. Electoral and the second level are the students focus on, as trustees make their decision. Two people to try to, um, you know, satisfy, if you will. Uh, but also to remember that students are your constituents as well, right? So implications, um, priority is on the student success with supporting, support coming from the larger constituencies. Um, what other implications, anyone would like to add?
The larger constituency is, consists of what?
The community at large. If we have two constituencies, one, the primary one being the students, because that's why we're here, and then we have a electoral, electorate, you know, the community who actually votes us in or out, and who, who have, and who are, who are directly tied to our primary constituency group.
The side of community.
Go ahead, Chris, uh, Christie.
Okay, I, I think that, um, this, this can sometimes lead to, when you're, you have very vocal constituents, and they are talking at you, and sometimes you may agree with them, and this is where sometimes personal agendas come in, based on ones are telling you or want. So I mean, that to me is an implication. That it could, I, I think that, from my perspective, the students always should come first, rather than the electorate. And I think that, that, that we always need to come with the view that if, if it's in the student's best interest. Sometimes what our constituents want may not necessarily be in the student's best interest.
Yeah, just keep looking, I'm just doing.
So no, that's all I was gonna say, is I just think that that's where a lot of times that personal agenda, your personal agendas, can come directly from your voters or your, your base. But, but from my, but I think that the students always need to, that should be their focus, not necessarily the individual wants of the constituency, in particular if it's not meeting the needs of the students.
Right. Any other implications that you're thinking of, and we can go on, how might we operate differently as well? How about you act, um, operate differently? But it says, supporting the strategic agenda, strategic district agenda, once you guys get it, right? You're working on it. Are you good right here?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, because the strategic plan, everything flows off of that. Okay, Christie and Latonya, Dr. Young. You had, um, this is what you shared, having a single agenda description. You put not moving beyond a single agenda, balance, um, their concern with board agenda, generates defensive action and boards cannot move forward. This is what a single agenda is. Would anyone like to add anything, or you have any comments about that? Or we could go right to, what are the implications? To prevent the board from moving forward, no coherence, need peripheral vision. What, um, yeah.
Other implications could be that you're not acting in the, what's best for all students of the district.
What did you say, John? I'm sorry.
An implication could be that if you are not, if you're working on your own agenda, that you're not working towards what's best for all students in the district.
Okay. Anybody else? What, what are your, what could be some implications of a single agenda, one purpose one?
That they don't have the mindset of a, um, of, um, shared moral imperative.
Because that's collective, right? It's not an individual thing, right?
Right.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, it can destroy a school district. But Deborah, can you put in there, don't have the collective mindset of a shared moral agenda?
Don't have a collective?
Yeah, yeah, a collective mindset.
Okay.
Because you have that one person, or two, or whatever it is. Single-minded.
Single-minded, yeah.
And what's sad is, we see currently what's happening to school districts that are having these distractions, and the implementa- implementation, ah. You know what I'm trying to say? I'm tired.
Say it again, say it again.
Well, San Francisco is, is a prime example right now. They're just going down, the board members, the community is furious with them for the implications of mismanaging and good, trying to rename schools, and the fiasco of renaming schools during COVID and the pandemic, and now the public wants to get rid of them, because they were not focused on what was important, and they also now have a hundred and thirty million dollar deficit. So they were, they were working on other agendas, not what's best for the school district, and a lot of them are looking to be recalled, and they, they just, they, they were not a unity of what was important for the district. Bill, did I get all that? Because I know we've had, oh, he's off with his doctor. But we all been listening about what's happening with San Francisco, and it's, it's like a very good example of what not to do.
What not to do, yeah, so unfortunate. And then, like you said, the climate of what's happening, um, from how the community is engaging, everyone's, you know, really, um, there's so many more spirited interactions now than ever before at board meetings, and you still have to have civility. You still, yes, you have to allow the space for the community to speak their, their piece, but I think still you have to make sure that you control your meeting, and just kind of set the parameter, you know, and I know the Brown Act, that yes, they have a right, but you still want civility. Because it's just a matter, this is a business meeting, and, and, you know, people will listen to you when they're not, when you're not spewing all of this venom. And so that's how people hear you. If you, you could be really upset about something without, you know, degrading the board, the superintendent, and staff, and things of that nature, so we have to really kind of watch that, um, absolutely.
De- Deborah, I, I want to say two things. Number one, I, I gotta go now, but, but I also want to say, San Francisco is a prime example of what we were talking about earlier, in, in understanding constituency politics.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and, 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 I mean, they are the, the, the model for that, for that learning, so, so that could be maybe our next thing to look at, because the constituency, the constituency in, in San Francisco is literally trying to run the school district.
Yes, and that's starting to happen, yeah, absolutely, and that's because, yeah. And again, not, if you, if you lose control, if, or if they find, anyone finds a crack, any community when they're engaging with, and they find, then they're gonna o- open it wide open, and it's hard to get that control back. Because people are too emotional. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gross, and
Okay.
Because you have to leave early, I'm sitting, I'm gonna send you a homework assignment.
Okay, please, please do, I'd be more than welcome to do it.
Okay, you're gonna get one.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, what about, um, how might we operate, the mindset of each needs to be able to see the whole agenda? Share, here we go, and it's okay to keep mentioning the shared moral imperative, because that is extremely important. Um, and that's how you can remind each other when you start, um, kind of leaving, you know, staying centered on, on governance and, and making decisions collectively, and instead of being in- an individual, of what you want done, or how you feel, you know, and our language will even change. That's how we know we're starting to kind of shift away from the focus, when we start saying more of what I want, um, what, and what I know, and who I, you know, all of these things, so. Anything to add about how you can, you would operate differently to deal with these, um, you know, this, um, single agenda, not that it's happening, but just kind of be thinking about, what do you need to have in place to make sure, you know?
To always come back to that, to represent all of the students in the district, and are all decisions being based on that. And looking at it through data and through, through, um, concrete, um, reasoning why you're making your decisions. Looks like Deborah's frozen. Are you back, Deborah?
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. And my, because my internet is high, so I don't know why I keep losing you guys. I don't know, I'm just like sitting still here. So, sorry about that. Okay. Let's look at, okay, for Kristi and, and Dr. Young, did you want to add anything? Okay, with the my way or the board's way? You really described it, the false narrative selling. Now, data is critical. So implications separates the needs from the wants, absolutely. What would you add there, anyone?
Well, the implications, the implications could also show that you're not collaborating or you're not working as a cohesive team to the public. If someone's trying to just get their way and not compromise to be one-fifth or to always know how to collaborate and team, you know, use teamwork or look at the whole picture.
You may not get anything done.
Yeah.
Yeah?
In dealing with my way or the board's way is a compromise selling out. I don't usually, if you, if, if, if your beliefs are driven by data, then the rest is history. You, you have something always to back up, the counter, counteract the negative with the positive. So you always have to be ready for the negative with positive related data, data that, that reflects what they're, you know, saying that you're selling out. And that kind of puts a damper on anything. They, they're not really wait, they're not really ready for you to have that knowledge. They just normally when a person feels selling out, feel like it's selling out. They, they, they're not, they're not really there.
Right. Because the data should make you do it, you know? Your research and all of that. Because if, if you're having conversations that is just hypothetical and, you know, or my experience, okay, there's a time and a place for that. So now, now that we've put all of our lived experiences on the table, now what does the data tell us to do?
Right.
What direction does it take us into?
Let's get down to the real deal.
Exactly. Because you only have the lived experiences and so you're, you're really sharing that information that will help in the overall determination of the what. It shouldn't be because I did this, I think this is what we need to do. No, that's just a piece of the information that's going to be considered to make the, because at the end of the day, you have to say what's best for our students. What, what, what do we have, you know, in, in our framework here? Our parameters in which we are to operate? What do we have in order to make the best decision? And, and so absolutely right, the data's, you know, data should make you do it. And it's not just one data source. You know, you have the quantitative and the qualitative data. You have different, you have your data dashboard, you have different data resources and, and, and really talking to people who it will impact is powerful. So, so it's not that, well, we have to make all the decisions. Well, after you collect all of the evidence, it's like being on a jury duty, you know, a jury duty.
Yeah, the decisions need to be informed decisions.
Yeah.
Not just someone's opinion.
Absolutely. And this is how, when, when, when any team is together and you're finding that, again, that you're moving away from being on the mark here. You can engage with each other. You guys are, you know, there's civility with this team. You should be very comfortable just saying, you know, it's all in how you approach it. Help me understand, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding this. And what's our intent? Our is always inclusive, what's our intent here? We, we are trying to get to the same place. So having those good dialogues with each other instead of just shutting down and like, well, they just have, they just want to do what they want to do. Well, in any other kind of situation, you probably could just ignore them, but not in a governance team. It needs to be addressed because we need everyone's mind, that moral imperative, collectively thinking we're gonna have to do what's best for children. Do we have different ideas on how to do that? Absolutely. And once those are discussed, guess what? You let the expert make the decision and that's your superintendent, is that? Because they, they know that stuff, how it will fit in. They know all the other pieces that need to be considered as well, okay? Doing it different using your data system, use data-driven systems, absolutely. What else would you add to that?
I think also like what I said, just so that it's not for the public's appearance that if my way, someone's stuck in their way, that that's being discussed in a way, hopefully in private, to figure out how to come together and figure out and look at all the information to be able to come to understandings so that it's not showing. We don't do this in our board, but I'm saying for other boards that it just doesn't look like that, that they work together or they, or that they all have their own agenda. If, if it was, oh, but my way is they have to have this. Someone else, well, I think they need to have that. We, we don't do that. But I think that if there was that situation, if there was a new trustee or whatever that had that issue, it needs to be taken care of as much as you can before it gets out in the pub, to the public that's viewing that. Because that will give an image of, that you're not getting the job done, you're not working together and you're not being good role models for the, for the students on how to work together collaboratively.
I, I kind of rely upon clarifying questions of a question. I always ask, can you clarify that a little bit? Can you break that down a little bit more for me so I can get a better understanding of what exactly, I can, how I can do, guide you possibly? A little bit of time, that gives you a little bit of time to see how, how they're perceiving the information that they have. It gives you time to listen for details and, and, and key points. So you can take back, so you can deliver back from your, your database. Because you're driven by a data system to deal with the question. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
No, and, and I really like, and it does, because this is where we get into a lot of trouble, where someone will pose the question and then the kind of conversation just continues to go around and you're left like, I don't even know how to respond. And it is because I don't understand the question. But so it's okay to say, can you clarify the question before you can respond? So I, I really liked it. I, I have seen this in action with, with groups where you're not perceived as, well, you don't want to engage in this discussion because you want it your own way. No, it's actually because I'm really not understanding. And so I'm not second guessing you or anything, but I truly need to have this clarified so I can make the connections myself so that then I can contribute to the conversation. So that's just allow, that's engage in each other because you're, you're not assuming that they are, anyone is putting forth anything that's not good for the students, hopefully. But just clarify it. Because again, you may be posing a question, having more information than I do. And so I need you to just share that. So it's okay to.
Always be, always be cognizant that you say, you know what? I don't really know the answer to that question, but you know, give me your name and number and I will get back to you.
Absolutely, absolutely. If you don't know, you don't know, definitely don't make it up.
Yeah, but you don't know necessarily where, where they're coming from. It gives you time, it gives you some more time to do a, a, an intelligent response.
Right, exactly, exactly. Okay, rubber stamping, how about that? You engage in deep learning, fully prepared. Board engaged in deep learning, fully prepared. Carry out in confidence and informed manner. Top the walk. That's the rubber stamp conundrum, right? So implications, you guys put moot point irrelevant. So, nothing to add there or how might you, you, you operate differently? So again, these situations, scenarios don't necessarily have to be happening there. It's just to inform you because all it takes is one different board member, come on. So if you have been talking about this and just be equipped on how to engage when, when different behaviors pop up. And, and so, so yeah. So rubber stamping, but why would someone even assume that there's rubber stamping? What, 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 what is?
Well, sometimes, sometimes community members or people online make vague statements like, oh, they just rubber stamp everything for the district. They don't challenge anything. The district runs the board, the board doesn't run the district. I've heard that many a times for O'Leao. So.
Well, I think that when we, we normally vote the same. And the reason that we vote the same is because we've done our due diligence. We've talked to the superintendent, we've asked the questions that we need answered in order to get to that yes. And if, and, and I strongly believe that if there was a strong no, that we would either pull the item or vote no. So, so I, that's why, for me, it's like, it's what other people think. It's not actually what's happening, which makes it irrelevant and moot. Because we're doing our due diligence. We're doing the necessary work in order to, to operate this district, basically. And, and, or have the superintendent be the superintendent.
But then again, the community.
Usually the people that are doing all the lip service are not doing the research service, okay? That's the way I look, I look at that. When they're saying you're doing rubber stamping or they, they don't know the depth of, of, they, they don't do the research to really, before they open their mouths.
But also it could be perception. Because at our meetings, they see, they don't realize, people that don't know that what Kristi said, that we get the agenda on Friday, we study, we talk, we meet with Bill, we go through, we ask our questions, we do a lot of work, we front-load everything, and then we get to the meeting and it's yes, 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 yes. But an outsider or someone in the community that may be watching and they don't realize or they don't know that we do that, then they just see, oh, they just say yes to everything.
Yeah.
So it would be good if the president would occasionally say that when we get to consent or to other items, that there was a short statement that was said. For those of you in the community that are watching right now, we are now coming to items we are going to vote upon. This is what the board has done to get to this point. So there's just very brief, and then it says, we've all had the agenda since Friday, we've all met with the superintendent, we've asked questions, we had our questions clarified, and now we're at the point to ready to vote. So then someone who's watching the video or watching us in the boardroom, they now have that little snippet, oh, they're not just saying yes to everything. Oh, okay, I understand now.
And you've done that several times, a number of times, John, and I really appreciate that you've said that during meetings because I think it brings back the focus to the business at hand.
And you know, another thing, that would be a point to educate the public on asking, what do we do? How is it, how does it look? What does it come, this, we come from A, B, C. That's how it got on the agenda.
Yes. Another time, we, oh, sorry.
Educating the community.
The other time on the agenda, it's very important to say is during public forum, when we just, we're only allowed to listen, but if a statement by the president is said first, this is time for the community to, to state any issues or concerns. The board's role is only to listen, we will not be responding. We may take, we will take notes, we are listening, but we will not respond. So do not take offense or this is just what we do, we listen to the concerns. But there will be no response to your comment. Because a lot of times people get angry, well, I just told you blah, blah, blah. And no one's, like, you don't even listen to me, and they go on to the next thing. But if there was a quick little blurb that said, this is what we do during public forum, then people would not leave angry. They would know, oh, they did take notes, oh, they are gonna think about it. Yes, they can bring it up and, and research it.
Right. And you guys think of.
Thinking more on the lines of letting the community know the infrastructure, how an item gets on the agenda. Or how, yeah. The rubber stamping comes because of the fact, that rubber stamping mentality in my mind comes because they don't know the process of how that bill or how that particular thing got on the agenda and why it was okay or not okay. There's a process. We read them, we researched them. And we vote, I mean, whatever we do or whatever, that, you know, they need to know that. So that myth can be just, like, disappear.
Right, well, I want to also make sure, you know, especially making sure that since this is being broadcast, that there are opportunities for the community to hear your discussions, either your work sessions, whatever, you know, study sessions and when you're having dialogue at the dais. So it's not that you've done all of the work and then you come, even though, yes, when, when we use, we, we say the work is, is done by the time you get to the table and you can ask clarifying questions. But also there's always opportunities for the community to hear the dialogue. Now, I'm not talking about when you guys meet with your superintendent one-on-one. That's totally separate, that's for you. That has nothing to do with your, you know, that's not on the board agenda. That's something that you guys felt that it will really be helpful for the team and, and that's fine. But just remember that there are opportunities, you have to always have opportunities for the community to hear about, especially, you know, when you're going to close a school, let's say. There's, there are study sessions, there are community forums, there are opportunities for the community to hear what the plan is. Because again, whenever the board is together, it's a public meeting forum, it's, you're discussing business. And so I just want to be careful that we're not saying that we, by the time you get there, that's why we say yes, because we've already made our decision. Nope, because that has, the decisions are gonna still be made at the table and clarifying questions, that's why it's so key to, to make sure. And if, just say if you were in a session and a study session and staff did a real in-depth, gave you a lot of data or a lot of, in their presentation, just a lot of information to help you get to the point when you get to the board table, that you can make a decision. When they come, when you have the board meeting, that could be an abbreviated type of, of report out again so that now the community has an opportunity to know that we studied this and these are the big takeaways from it. And then, because then they'll be able to make a comment on what's on the agenda. So always thinking about. And then because then they'll be able to make a comment on what's on the agenda. So always thinking about that. There is a way, yes, you've done a lot of the work, but you come to the board table, you still are going to engage. And then you you go from there. So um superintendent and Dr. Uvalde, both of you, whichever, I can't see who came in first.
Superintendent was first.
Okay, superintendent.
Thank you. This this is one that's of of interest to me because the the implication. Of this distraction is is always, the implication is always for the superintendent. And and it's it's the notion that some in the community may have. That um if things are going too smoothly, then there must be something wrong. And I I remember talking to um my board president. In in Gaul, who was an excellent board president and really excellent board member. But he he would talk to me from time to time, he said, you know, there there people, he was, there there. There are people in town are busting my chops because they said we we all get along too well. And you know, all these votes are five oh. And they say, you know, and these are old timers, you know, they were on the board in the eighties and the nineties and they. By God, they held their superintendent accountable and don't you fall in love with your superintendent, you know, it's like, don't you just do whatever it is he wants? So he said, so what do I say to them? And I said, what you ought to say to them is the five O's. Are 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 a signal of a of a unified board. Of of an intelligent board and of a relationship that is healthy. Between the superintendent and and the board. And one of the things that I've talked to this board a lot about and and part of my. My philosophy as a superintendent is to always approach items that I bring forward. With a five O mentality. That what I'm trying to bring to you are the kinds of things that are reflective and are are of a common interest. That that all of you can get behind. Now, there will be times. Um that that there will be a split vote, there's there's no, you know, that happens from time to time. And sometimes there will be really, really tough times and really, really, really tough decisions. That that you're just not gonna get a unified board behind. But I've heard board, I've heard superintendents. In in, you know, that I know, say, well, I I can count to three. I think that's foolish because every two years, there's an election. And I know mem- I know superintendent friends of mine who I I can count to three and then came, November came. And they can only count to two or they can only count to one. Guess what? In June, they're gone. So so that, so I think what what I would talk to Dan about when he would bring this up. Said, you know, push back on these old timers, you know, maybe they're just jealous because they didn't, they couldn't get along with their superintendent. But, you know, push back and say like, we we do a lot of, you know, kind of like what we're talking about here, we do a lot of work. You know, we don't just show up, you know, board meeting, open the agenda for the very first time and then, you know, give grief to each other. And to our superintendent, we take it seriously, we do our homework. We ask the questions ahead of time, we ask the superintendent superintendent and staff. We make sure that our questions are answered, we do a lot of prep work, so when we come in, yes, it looks smooth. It's smooth because we make it smooth because we're professional, because we do a good job, because we because we, you know, we do that. And the other thing I would say, just, you know, real quickly, kind of as we talk about discussion and action and. Five O and all the other kind of stuff, you know, kind of going back to what we were talking about last night. We we can work that agenda, we've got an agenda now that has all the pieces in it. That will allow for more discussion on the items that really need it, that will allow for more discussion around action items or allow for more discussion where. Where the board wants the constituents to hear that there is a conversation, it doesn't have to necessarily be. Um for consent item, but some more questions, more issues. Um you know, more controversy maybe, you know, or or this deeper. That, you know, as we're building that agenda, you know, we we said, no, let's not put that on consent, let's put that in action. Or or let's bring forward an item that the board's been asking about and make it an information. Um item, so there's conversation. Or it's a big enough item, you know, declining enrollment, budget. Other kinds of things, we we have a a special board workshop. And that might help if you guys get any of that noise out there, but I find that a lot of times if people who are giving that noise. You know, the the a lot of times, you know, if they, sometimes they're ex-board members, sometimes they didn't have such a great time. Um when they were on the board and and sometimes I think people look to make these meetings more entertaining for them. And and this is, this this board and the functions of this board and this superintendent and this district are not for the entertainment. Of the community. It's for the service and education of children. And that's a real frustration of mine because I do see that happen a lot, that people want to use you guys and use this process. To to drum up controversy, feed Twitter and Facebook. You know, and have something to talk about at the coffee shop the next morning.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Dr. Uvalde, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I I I lived at least at least minimum of two years. You know, where I didn't sleep and you got beat up all the time. And and the, you know, it's always five, three, five, three. I would prefer five, zero anytime. When you go through what we went through, you know, it's not only two years, but actually four years. And and uh it it's and and a lot of that is really coming from the public that they, the first thing that you. That people talk about on on Thursday was what happened at the school board. And that was the regular, regular conversation that went on for years. And 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 I, believe me, I would prefer to have five, zero anytime. Five, one, it's it's okay too. But but let me tell you, it's you could get an honorary members in the board and that that that. That 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 was really discouraged a lot of people. And not only that only goes around the community, but it impacts the whole school district. And 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 the first thing that they would talk about when they get in school is what happened at the school board Wednesday?
Yeah, and 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 this is where, that's that's why board governance training is so important. Um because in in most states, I think there might be a sprinkle of one or two that requires. Uh board members to um, you know, get certified at, you know, whatever level once they become a board member, but prior to. There's no requirement prior to getting this very important job. And so naturally, when you come on, people will bring whatever behaviors that they had. That that they practiced before, they bring that to the board table. And and I always, I really do believe that when you see a lot of dysfunction in in boards. It's, I always try to look at, look at board behavior and it's usually is always aligned with. Um they don't know their role. And I think once board members, majority of board members want to be effective. And once they learn their board, their their roles and responsibilities, they learn how to work collaboratively with the superintendent. But yes, there are some board members out there, sprinkled out there, um who feel that. I need to be the um, I need to be the one who goes against the grain. Because that's what the community put me here for. Don't believe anything, that they have that in it, but that that single mindedness too. But you know, and they run on a campaign of what they were going to do. But when they get the job, they quickly find out you were one vote. And so the frustration kicks in and then you used to become a disruptor. And sometimes in order for a board to survive and be effective, sometimes it's a four, one on everything. And that's just the way it has to be. But after a while. The community is going to start looking at that one person who doesn't think anybody on the team knows what they're doing but them. They're going to start looking at, well, wait a minute now, you can't agree on anything with them. And so it's unfortunate when it's like that, but superintendent, like you were saying, when a superintendent is counting, I got three votes. That is just not the way to have a job. Because number one, you have five employees, you 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 have five bosses, I mean. And so you you can't be trying to just satisfy three because that's not the team, that's not, those three, even though they have the vote. They are not representative of the entire Board of Education. So, yeah, that that's, that just doesn't fare well at all. Um Dr. Uvalde, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just one, one more, one, one last thing. And that is the uh, John alluded to it, that we used to have a uh a blurb. About, you know, when when a community forum, uh we removed that for some reason. And uh but I think that's helpful to have, to to remind people, but 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 it's not really as. Effective now because you're doing virtual. But if you're having something publicly, person to person, then that's that's another matter.
Right, and when you guys are begin your journey on doing your strategic plan. Oh, you're going to have many opportunities to have community engagement forums and. And they may want to bring up something that has nothing to do with what that night's meeting is, it is the strategic plan. But if if it's connected to student outcomes and that's all a part of the plan, you know, you know, that. Those will be opportunities again for the board superintendent to educate the community. On how you operate um a- as as a governing team because it's not the community's responsibility to. To sit in and get board governance training. You know, it was the board, the superintendent is teaching up to you as far as what the. Uh educational needs are and it's your responsibility to to educate the the community. On definitely the parameters in which governance is and and you don't. No board member has a right to change the rules or 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 move the the goalposts, if you will. Um these are the parameters in which we have to operate. Now, when you find yourself feeling too combined and. You can't do what you need to do as far as in your mind and perhaps. In this setting, it was not the best for you. You can still advocate for children on the other side of the table. So it's just finding, you know, you're i- if you're a good fit for governance and when we first started on this um. Book studying, you know, it was about, do you have the capacity to govern? And that's what something every individual board member really has to look at. Do I have the capacity? Do I have? Something taken away from you personally, just. Within the confines of what governance is, do I have the capacity to do this and do it effectively? And so a- absolutely, so. All right, so. Here we go with confidentiality. Now, um superintendent and John, I just put yours. And yeah, I put the implications, see that I divided. You didn't really have in there what you might do differently, so I just kind of cut and paste and dropped it in there. So confidentiality, you guys can see, I mean, I'm going to push this down, so I just put all on one page.
You know what I did is I took bullet notes. And I think I think what we came, I think what we came to was that, you know, a lot of these things are not. Occurring for us, but we we kind of went to like, some, we probably were more on on implications. With the first few bullets. And then it talks about, you know, what what the strategies might be to change. Those if they if they were to, you know, if and when they come up. I don't know that I captured the description, I was taking notes because most of these were self-explanatory.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just didn't want to pull some of your bullets that put over there without, I wanted you guys to do that. So now everyone can see, so you and John could kind of talk confidentiality. It it is self-explanatory, but you know what? This is an area that so many districts have a discussion with. And for the life of me, I just cannot understand that. There is only one definition, it's that, well, no confidentiality, it's. And number one, you're violating the law when you share information. And I know you you mentioned about, you know, recordings. Uh you know, some boards have had to actually do board norms to say, when we go into executive session. We will leave our uh electronic devices outside the door. Because this behavior, there were people doing um Facebook Live. And which is so detrimental because it's the topics that you are able to talk about. They impact the livelihoods of your staff or or definitely impact children. So why would anyone feel that that is okay to do? Just blows my mind. I I just don't, and I'm glad that this doesn't happen here, but you always have to. Address issues, whether they're happening or not, so. Um so, yeah, so any with with what um John and and superintendent. Um share, do you guys see anything that needs to be added or?
The bullet that says if the if, that one I think goes to how we'd operate differently if. So that that needs to be moved down to um. And then. And for as a new board member, of course, they would need to be told, like if there's a new trustee. They would have to be to know the knowledge that when you're in closed session, what's discussed. Does not come out of close, you don't discuss it. And if there's any litigation or other things, it's not something um with personnel or anything, you you can't discuss it. But I think the biggest thing, um when you look at the um confidentiality, number. Seven. It comes back to the trust that we have in each other and the trust that the public has within us too. So when Bill gave that example yesterday of that one person that was. Um texting out the numbers for negotiations, oh, they're going as high as three percent or whatever. That totally broke the confidentially and the work of the district. It it undermined everything and they have to start over, there's, there was no process. But um, nothing will betray the trust on a board more quickly than breaching confidentiality. And that's at any level. So a new person that comes in, you definitely have to let them know. Just closed session, legal issues, and whatever we discuss among ourselves, it stays there. So I think that's just actually training.
It is, it is. Um yeah, because you're in a violation, because what if you share something? And again, it's about salaries, about disciplinary, um and someone, you have a civil suit now against you. Uh yes, in districts have insurance and all that, but do you want to be sued? Um you know, and they're they're gonna name the Board of Education as well. You know, because again, then people will start seeing your behaviors and then they will lose total respect. And then your colleagues, you'll lose respect for each other. That's the key thing, like you said, when you start, you know, kind of chipping away because of some behavior. That is just unacceptable because number one, the position you're in, you are in, it is a professional position. Is a business meeting, we are all adult. And there are, there's a level of expectations of how we interact. And again, what are we modeling for the those students that we're making decisions for? How are they even going to respect you? You know, they they, you know, they may think all the board, they're 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 a joke. If you wanted student um representatives, they're like, are you serious? Why would I want to be there and my my student body, they don't even respect you? So all of this is a dominoes effect, absolutely. That confidentiality will erode trust so quickly, so quickly. So what about leader, trustee, leader or follower? Dr. Uvalde, where I go, did you want to say something on this one? Nope, you're on mute. There you go.
I think it's important to recognize that. The when when we have, we have a new trustee and has not, they have not attended. Uh the workshops. Uh I think confidentiality is is taken a lot lighter. Than recognizing the the impact of what the law says. Because when it's confidentiality, uh if if you're not aware of the law that impacts us. You would think it's just a common confidentiality, like gossip.
God, there you go.
You know, you take it, you take it, at least it's a gossip. But when you're at a board, official board meeting, you can't take that thing lightly. It's really a legal issue. Very important for us to remind ourselves that when you have a new new board member. That that is discussed, especially prior to prior to the closed session.
And that's why the onboarding is so important and yeah, and when they. Come to their first meeting and you have to have an executive session, there should be a few minutes right right before. Or prior, it's on the agenda already, so prepping them, this is the, these are the parameters in which we operate. This is the law, here's the Brown egg and if, you know, I I don't think you guys have your, have a legal person. On staff, um is that correct? You don't have legal counsel. But those, even those districts that do, the legal person is right there making sure, like, whoa, wait a minute. Very careful what you can say, even when you come out. It's very clear, all you can say is what action you took, you can't. The 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 discussions, even people talk about, well, note taking, because once something is written down. It becomes a a foible, you know, Freedom of Information Act. So how do you, you have to really look, and and there may be some exceptions. So how do you, you have to really look and and there may be some exceptions when you're in closed session. Um, but it's just writing things down, I'm telling you, just. You just have to be very careful, but that's where legal counsel can definitely. I'll give you guidance on that and, you know, knowing the Brown like, because I think the Brown Act is very clear. It is very clear. Okay, what about trustee? We're almost done here and then we're gonna take a break and so thank you for. Hanging in here because I'm building a document for you, so the trusting leader or follower, that was one of yours. Um implications. One who get who goes out of their own uh on their own. Can undermine the remainder of the board, must be recentered on the norms and protocols, absolutely. The remainder of the board should check. The behavior, that's your norms, you agree that you've given each other permission. To police each other, if you will, in a most respectful way. Um, so what else would you add to that? If you had to um. Yeah, needed to do anything different or other, I think those are some great implications, but. If it was occurring, what would you have to do differently?
One point that we I don't recall seeing is that it ruins one's credibility. It really hurts one's credibility. Uh, the the one who is. A follower, as as noted up there. Uh, you may, you may. You know, you may start showing off and tell people what what in the world is going on. Especially dealing with confidentiality, but it still ruins your credibility.
It does, it does.
That means that, you know, you're one who we cannot trust.
Yeah, and and even if you're you're you never agree. On anything, remember we talked like that, talked about that yesterday, even if you're on the other other side of the um decision. But if I respect you because you did your homework, you were very thorough. Um, you engaged in conversation and the discussion with us, but you 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 just can't vote this way. I can respect that. Um, but when you're doing, the behavior is so negative and. Um, just degrading the, because it impacts the district as a whole, like we said, it it did will. Mr. Gross said it will destroy the district eventually, it is going to happen. And then you start thinking about, okay, parents are gonna start taking their kids away, that impacts your budget, right? Um, teachers, principals are no longer gonna work there, that's going to impact. The the delivery of education to to your students, so it's a dominoes effect that. You just have to make sure that if for whatever reason, if there's something going on with morale or. Let your superintendent handle that, but don't let any of the staff. Point to the Board of Education on why they can't work for this. School district because of this behavior is is just not, it's not an environment, it's not a a a. Environment that I feel valued in, so you don't ever want the finger to be pointed toward the Board of Education, which. There are many examples out there unfortunately that um. Everyone's pointing to boards of education, so.
Well, there there were times, uh Deborah, where. Where uh we lost a lot of good emplo- uh pot potential employees. Because of the reputation of the board when we had.
Yeah.
It was really tough.
And you can't blame them for leaving.
Yeah.
You know, and yes, some people leave because they have a better offer, there's nothing you can do, you know. They have to make the best decision, but when they're leaving, they get connected directly to the behavior. Of the Board of Education, the behavior that the the board is um hindering the um. Superintendent uh from doing his or her job or the building principles, all of that, absolutely. And this is real, I see it, I've I've worked with boards where it's happening. And I pretty much say unless this whole board changes, it's not going to change. You know, at least half of the board members need to go. Uh, because it's the dynamics, they are so stuck in the rut where it's going to be their way or the highway. Um, that the community wants me to keep, you know, pushing the envelope. Uh, and it's because of their lack of understanding what the role is, and that's why I say, I think, once they get to know. They know better, some of them just choose, like, I know, but I'm I'm gonna continue to do it this way, there's there's nothing you can do about it. Yes, Christie?
Well, I was gonna say that not only, you know, the the trust. Of the staff, but it's also the trust of the community is impacted and not only would we lose. You know, good staff members, but also families. People take their kids out, they can't trust the board, trust that, you know, the the. The behaviors, um, why would they want their kids to be in that district?
And one thing to go as well is um. What the book refers to is, so we have leaders or the followers. So the leaders, of course, are wanted on a board, but the board cannot be led in five different directions.
No.
So you have to make sure that you have that moral imperative, you have that cohesiveness, you have that. You're all in the same direction swimming forward. And um. But then the followers, excuse me. Shows that people are not either doing their work or really looking at the research or. Asking the questions or doing what they need to do, so. Everyone needs to have a balance of working together as one fifth and doing their job, we do that well here. So Bill and I had a hard time because that's not happening here, but if it was happening. Then we would have to remind someone of their role and what the expectations are. Far as studying our um. Our board pockets and being ready for our meetings and uh. Following our norms. And it shouldn't be our each direction, it should be the school district's direction. Not my direction, not, everyone feels what the direction should be. But the strategic plan and our school district will say what the direction is. Not an individual leader on the board that's perceived maybe as a leader.
Yeah, that's spot on, absolutely. And you guys are, you know, the where you guys are as far as understanding your roles and responsibilities and you are modeling it. And not to have a strategic plan in place is is very impressive, I know it took a lot of work, you know, based upon some history. Um, and then having a good um person sitting in that superintendent seat who who knows how to be a superintendent. But these things are all working for you, so just think about how more impactful you will be once. The su- you know, the the blueprint is laid out because you couldn't kind of know it, but it needs to be solidified. You know, and then once that's in place and the board still has to look at, so. Strategic plan is administratively driven and that's where the work is. So what does this have to do with the Board of Education? So it's about making sure that, are you monitoring it? Are you evaluating? Um, are you making any adjustments that need when the superintendent puts forth a recommendation? Um, you're understanding like, yep, we're 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 not going to make this goal if we don't make some adjustments here, that's what it looks like. When you have that strategic plan in place, because you're, everyone's job is to make sure that we're successful. Because a lot of effort has been put into laying out the blueprint. A lot of thought, a lot of community input, the staff rolling up their sleeve, doing the work. And so how do we all support? The strategic plan to make sure that staff gets what they need to be successful. Because if they are successful, then your students will be as well. Okay, um, the last one here, handling um trustee professional expertise. Uh, let me put it like that. It can happen particularly on a board that has professional expertise, yeah. We have four current and retired educators. Uh, it's always tempting to weigh in on school operations. It's important to remind the board members of their roles, uh revisit norms, um. Absolutely, need to trust the staff and the process, everyone stay in their lane. And we kind of talked about that, I know you referred to this again, superintendent, um.
And actually, it's how can we work to um operate differently? That would be revisit the norms and protocols, that would go down. That's what we talked about to go there.
Yeah.
And then, and 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 this is a difficult one because. If you've been a principal or teacher or district office employee. And you have this knowledge and you see the workings and you know what's worked or not worked, it's really hard to not. Um, to say, because you you you, that's been, that was your life's career, that was your passion. It's what you did and what is probably your why, why you're here to help the board. So it's very difficult, but I think this board is very good at. Having that background and that why and directing it, but trusting Bill. To be able to through his evaluations or through his processes or dealing with the the district. That that's how it has to happen. To let him, let it go, especially this is trouble in districts with hiring or letting people go.
Yo, my God.
Hiring, some people like me, well, I want you to hire this person because I've known them. Well, who are we to say? You know, are people said, have asked the board, will you recommend me because I want to apply for that position? And that puts the board, it's like, I can't recommend you because that's that's putting me in a position. I can't give you extra edge to anything.
Right.
Um, so it's very difficult. And this board has seen different situations over the years. Where maybe someone's applying for a position. And we want maybe a certain ethnicity or we want a certain something. Or someone's being let go of a position. And maybe they're a certain ethnicity or group that we don't want to lose. Well, that's not for us to judge. We're not the one who does the evaluation and far as hiring, we're not the one who goes through the. Application process and read all the background and find out their experience and call their references. We don't do any of that, that's for Bill to do and HR and for the district staff to do. But that has been difficult, that's been difficult, especially the hiring or letting go, because these are people in our community. So that could really touch us in a way or have people in the community saying, how can you let that happen? Or or why would you, why would they, why are they gonna let that person go? And that puts the board member like, uh, that's really not.
Yeah, well.
No matter, that's evaluation, that's nothing I can talk about.
Right, right.
And. This gets real sticky.
Oh, absolutely, and John, you're right, many board members are in that position because again, the community doesn't understand. Their role, I mean, your role necessarily, but it's all in what are you leading them to believe to? When you're engaging, if they approach you, number one, you didn't let anyone go because you have, your superintendent is still sitting there, that's not your staff. And so, but again, you're right, you don't talk about personnel issues. But when they're asking you, well, I want to apply, only thing you can do is like, here's our website where the link is to apply. And and all you have to do previously, you shouldn't have to just wait till this opportunity. You should have already had in place a conversation with your superintendent regarding, um, do we have? Um, uh, what are we doing to ensure that we have a diverse teaching staff? Or principals, do we have, do we um, um, uh, recruit from different areas? That's that high level that the board, not telling him who to to um hire. But saying, making sure that the pool is diverse enough, are you doing everything that you can? To ensure that we have a diverse pool of candidates. Once, if that answers yes, then whoever in that pool, they gotta sell themselves, if you will, they have to do. They have to be the best candidate, and if you happen to be able to check those other boxes, that is phenomenal. But the only way you have a higher chance of checking boxes, if you will. Uh, is when you have more of a diverse pool. If you only have one of this ethnicity and twenty of the others, it's, you know what I mean? So the board is just saying, superintendent, do you have things in place? To ensure that HR is doing, and it's like, yep, because this is what the board. Has said from the very beginning, this is how we operate, to make sure that we um. You know, can diversify, not when it comes to where the superintendent has to let someone go, that's on the superintendent. He's the one looking at the evaluations, he's the one knowing if this person has had to be. Put on, you know, I have special circumstance or whatever, but. When they give you the recommendation, you have to trust that he has done his due diligence. Because the last thing superintendent wants is for it to be a grievance or that someone comes back to sue you. Because I have all of these years of a beautiful uh glowing evaluation. And now all of a sudden I get one bad and you won't let me go, something is or or there hasn't been any evaluations. And then I have to look at the board like, why didn't you know? Because did you, did, was the superintendent sure, did you ever ask, do we have evaluations in place for every level? If he says yes, then of course then the buck stops with him on that one. So it's just again, ensuring that the proper things are in place. So that your superintendent can hire and yes, unfortunately, sometimes he has to let go staff based upon the big picture. It's not personal, it, this is business. And we have to make sure that wh- whatever the, whoever the individuals are, that they fit the needs of the district. That they are, just like with with in our jobs, we have a contract. You you continue to get paid when you continue to do the work, now what happens when you no longer are competent or no unable to do the work? The contract ends, it's not any different. It's not any different, so yes, we have to be very careful because you are connected to the community. Um, their friends, neighbors, relatives, and they will pull your coat tail, but you have to remind them of the position that you're in. It is putting you in a very awkward position, so you almost have to say. Uh, we can talk about a lot of things, but this is an area that I can't engage because of the position I have, and that's okay. That's okay, um, who else, I can't remember who had their hand up, I think, was it you, Christie? Okay, someone did, but it kind of went away. Um, are we good on this? I I believe everybody understands this, we just have to make sure that we're not doing it, that's the difference. Go ahead, Dr. Ubalde, I couldn't, there you go, it popped back up for me. And you're on mute.
You know, side remarks in this matter, you know, it's 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 not as easy.
No.
For some of us who are not as privileged with history. And and um. You know, it's easy, it's easy for them to say, hey, you know, I can't do that because of this, this and that. But you know, if you if you don't do that, you'll be the talk of the town in my community. You know, and you, they single you out, they talk bad, bad things about you. And and I just, I will leave it up, I, if someone asks me to 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 write a letter of recommendation. If if the person I know has credibility, I would do it, but I would leave it up to the superintendent to make that decision. I'm not gonna micromanage it, uh, but but there are times when I have to do that. And it's it's not, it's 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 a, it it depends on your place, you know, if you're a person of privilege. But you you that you can get away with that, but I'm not a person of privilege.
Okay.
I have a person, I have a community that's been so, you know, been neglected and and no no support. And I I don't mind if other, I I don't, I don't hear any of my my colleagues, for instance. Talking about, you know, my my, the the values that I have in regards to my community. So I end up talking about my community, I I tend to lift up my people because no one else is talking about it. And then. Criticized for for all I do is talking about my people, it's because nobody else is doing it.
Right, well, what we're talking about, community, or you're talking about what was best for the kids too. And and if it's the community, if they're staff people, you guys represent your whole community. And um, an African American doesn't just represent African American. White doesn't just necessarily is all the community, and you still have to be very careful. Not to be in a position to recommend anyone because you are on the Board of Education. You are one member, you can't speak for the Board of Education, but if there's a letter of recommendation. From a board member, it looks like the perception. That the board member, and that's gonna be a conflict right there, and so it would be best hiring. Stay out of it. Stay out of it, only when you have to look for a superintendent. Because you, there is nothing, it that's a slippery slope. And I understand what you're saying, Dr. Ubalde, you're very connected, this is where it's difficult, but you have to be able to look at. In my role as a governing body, there are some things that the perception, I shouldn't, I I, can I do it? But I could, but should I do that? How would this impact my colleagues as a Board of Education? So there are some other things in your statement too, it could be for any community. If you're feeling that no one else is. If you're feeling that no one else is talking about it. That's a whole nother discussion. But that doesn't mean that anyone would have to get in the space where the superintendent's role is. Because nobody else is helping our community, whoever that community is. So again, board members have to be careful, you have one employee. And you cannot, you have to be very careful with that. Did anyone else have their hand up? If not, we're going to take a break. Okay, I'm, let me pull you back here, so. Okay. Whoops, I don't want to do that. There you are.
Would you get a chance, uh uh Deborah, I need some help in regards to clarifying uh uh the the uh term imperative, moral imperative versus governance mindset.
Okay. We will talk more about that, absolutely. And so let's take, um, it's um six, no, I missed it. Five fifty-five, we're going to take a twenty minute break to give you a chance to get you something, a bite to eat. Okay?
All right.
So come back in about six fifteen. That sound right? Okay, so mute your mics and you turn off your your um, yes. Camera, thank you.
Michael. Michael. Michael.
Okay, everybody have a good break?
It was okay, a few snacks here, a few dishes, you know, coffee ready for tomorrow.
There you go. You sound like you have to go to work tomorrow.
Using all the minutes to get ready. Last night ate dinner after eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Will you be at the conference in December?
Yes ma'am. I will actually be in California for ten days out there.
Oh my god, you're just showing off girl.
Well, when they find out I'm in town, the districts are... So it looks like every month I will be out there. Could be from one week to two weeks, so.
That's really good. So I look forward to meeting you in person.
Absolutely. Oh yeah, you have not had the pleasure. How about that? It's been so... We would have if we would have been in person. Absolutely. So yes, I'm looking forward to it. Absolutely. And so, Dr. Uvalde, do you want me just to highlight those two so that everybody can hear, or you want a side conversation? Hope you're on mute.
Yeah, I would appreciate the clarity of that.
Sure, absolutely. Well, that's just because we talk a lot about moral imperative, right? And so, I mean, you know, the book is very clear, but what I highlighted is the short snippet of it, and it really is a shared moral imperative is a relentless commitment to the learning of all students, no exception. So you think about, that's the moral imperative of the board as a whole. So all your decision-making is based upon, you know, committing, commitment to making sure that every decision you make supports their teaching and learning. No exception. So this drives the work of the board of it, because that's the zone you're supposed to be in. And that's why your priorities, everything is, that's where you're supposed to stay focused, that's the moral imperative collectively. You're doing the work together. And so, when you're talking about having a governance mindset, this goes hand in hand. It's pretty much, you're always focused, excuse me, focused on children. So moral imperative is about all students, so you're always focused on the children, you watch the budget. You focus on long-term goals, your priorities. Superintendent handles those short-term goals and all of that. You support the staff by creating, again, we talked about that positive environment, the culture, what the board creates, that shows the staff that you value them. You hold organization, you hold everyone in the organization accountable to the, you know, to the community that you're serving. So you hold each other accountable, you hold the superintendent accountable, and he holds his staff accountable. Keeping the constituents of the district informed and up to date of the work that you're doing. So again, we talked about board members are to engage the community to let them know about the educational needs, what you guys are doing. Pretty soon you'll be talking about, your conversation will be that strategic plan, because that is the work you're doing, right? And so, having a commitment, a shared moral imperative is that we are going to stay committed to what's best for students. So that gets, then you don't have to worry about a single agenda item or a topic that you're interested in. We are concerned about all of our students. Are your constituencies, are they important? Absolutely. Hard stop. You are there to govern over the educational needs of the children. That's what your job is, right? And then you inform the community of the work that you're doing. Again, your strategic plan will be a good talking point of the what that's being done. And so, that mindset is that we're not going to be dealing with hot topics all the time. Hot topics distract us. Hot topics are when my neighbor comes and say, "Deborah, again, I want this job, can you hook me up?" That's distraction for me. Look, I will refer you to the website where you could apply. We would love to have you as an employee. How about that? That's as much as I can give you. You know, so every, my mindset is that I'm focusing on laying out the best educational journey for my scholars. And that's why you have to be very intentional and making sure you're not moving away. Because when you start moving away from the focus of what your job, what your role is, that's where it can become some dysfunctional behaviors or, and/or you could kind of get in the weeds, if you will, get in the way of the superintendent doing his job. And so, again, that's why I said governing is laid out, this is the box that you're in. There's a lot board members can do, absolutely. And it is so important of what you can do. And so, let's focus on the work is what you can do, and focusing on your priority that's leading you, that, you know, that's why you're doing the work that you're doing. So that's my best way of explaining the moral imperative. And it's something you continue to work at. Nobody just gets there and say, put the stake in the ground that we have arrived. You continue, you continue to work at it, you monitor your own behavior, your own interactions, and the behavior, the conversations that you have once you're away from the board table. Am I giving individuals information, maybe, because again, the community does not have all of the information that you guys have. They don't know the structure of the Board of Education. So am I, no intent, not intentionally, but am I engaging with people outside of the board setting, and they're assuming that I have more authority as far as hiring, or more authority as far as firing? Again, it's just checking, there's no intent, no malice intended, but we just have to make sure that we're not misleading the community that we can handle that, whatever that is. And it's easier said, Dr. Uvalde, absolutely. That's why we have to just continue to work at it, and you rely on your team members. No one has to be doing this on their own. You rely on your teammates to be that check and balance, like, oh, you're right. I probably, I kind of went left a little bit, I should have stayed center. So, but that's what a collaborative, effective team does with each other. So is that helpful?
Very helpful. A part of it is, you're familiar with theologian Reinhold Niebuhr. I think it sounds familiar. Yeah, he wrote the book Imperative, you know, Moral Imperative, so I'm trying to, I get caught up. But it fits in though. See, to me, to me, the moral imperative that you describe it is all that embracing thing. Whereby the governance mindset are the specifics. Within that imperative, the moral imperative. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. They go hand in hand. You can't have one without the other, absolutely.
Thank you. I'm glad to ask. Thank you.
No worries about that. That's why this book is always, and then your other supporting documents are going to be really good resources for you going forward, right? And so, we had mentioned, let me share my screen here. Can you see my screen? Can you see the PowerPoint? Yes. Alrighty. And so, you know, you guys, the good thing, and you know, when you read it in the book, it talked about a board culture, right? And it brought up about processes that are in place, governance principles, protocols, and board norms. The good thing is that we spend a lot of time putting your board norms together, right? And so, this is, I'm just going to go through this as a quick reminder, and then I'm going to display what your board norms are, and we are going to then look at page, let me see, I've got all my paperwork here. The next, in your workbook, we're going to go to page seventy in your workbook shortly. But right now, I just want to remind you of what this is, you know, working as a team, your best practice of principles. So how you should conduct your work matters for student achievement. You know, the research says that school boards, if you're a high performing, high achieving district, you exhibit characteristics of an effective board. And we've talked about that, and when you don't, then it's a low achieving, and this is, you know, the lighthouse study. You know, there's research to show those eight characteristics, you'll be a data savvy, working collaboratively with your superintendent, focusing on the mission and the vision. In the most dramatic examples, the research scholars compared the district's similar levels of poverty, disadvantage to determine the factors. So all of this plays a role in how the board operates, if you're going to be functional or dysfunctional. So we talked about the principle. So principles guide the work, and they represent that commitment by the board to high-quality governance, and you guys said this yesterday about transparency. Those are the principles you are committing to that. And so, the community should start seeing this pattern, the behavior, because again, you want to establish these principles, norms, and protocols prior to if there is going to ever be a change on the board in the near future, in a year or two, whatever. You want to make sure that you're grounded, so that it shouldn't matter what board member comes in to get in that seat, because you guys have principles, you have protocol, you have norms on how you operate. And so, in the community and the staff, anyone watching should be able to see these, that you're consistent. You focus on high-quality governance, and you show that by going, you know, getting your own professional learning, because you don't get to have conversations like we have been able to have like this at the DIES, because you are in a business meeting setting. And then you're going to be transparent, letting the community see what you're doing, so the staff understands what's expected of them as well. And we talked about protocols. So board policies are requirements that govern the district. These are your operating rules. So that's why we'll say protocols, board norms, operating procedures, they all kind of go hand in hand, but it's the structure of the work. What are you putting in place? And so, before I go to the norms, because you guys know what those norms are, what did you pick up in the book that when they were talking about principles and protocols? What kind of resulted with you? What were your thoughts about some of the things that the book shared about the principles, governing, governance principles? Just kind of, let's just share with each other.
What was the question?
Your governance principles that you read about in the book, what really stuck with you about principles and protocols? We're going to discuss norms, but I just want to get some feedback from you on the principles.
To me, is what really, that, those particular areas have to be in place in order to avoid chaos.
There you go. Absolutely, absolutely.
Or distraction.
Or distractions, there you go. Did you see, did you notice the governance principles on this district that they use as an example on page one twelve?
District twenty-three? Yeah, District twenty-three board.
Yeah. John, can you read those, in case others are listening, so we want to make sure of that?
Okay, number one, stay focused on student achievement and student wellness. Number two, govern together as a team with a common focus and purpose. Number three, govern in a transparent, open, and account-accessible manner. Number four, govern in collaboration with the superintendent and staff. Number five, maintain a high standard of integrity. And lastly, number six, make high-quality policy decisions based upon evidence and data.
Absolutely. This is what we have been talking about. And one of the key things, it says some things are non-negotiable. Your principles should be non-negotiable, right? Non-negotiable. So what about protocols? What did you pick up? Then we're going to circle back to norms, but what about protocols? What are some main reasons to adopt good protocols?
Gives you the principle of... Gives you the a a principle of uh, we call that predictable? That you have a predict, uh, that's a structure that's predictable.
A structure that's predictable. Okay.
Protocol, protocols usually provide the necessary infrastructure in order to be, in order to um, conduct a meeting.
Okay.
They 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 keep us focused on productive work.
Productive work. Absolutely. And something you guys had mentioned before, you, when you talk about new people coming in, new board member, how does it, does it help them? When you have protocols in place?
Well, yeah, it gives them a structure. Uh, language to work.
It's part of that governance mindset that you alluded that that I asked. It is part of that.
It is. It is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It is. And and superintendent, before we go to the norms, because you were involved with those as well. Um, having protocols and principles in place, how does this impact your your job?
You you know, it provides some structure and and and, you know, when we, you know, when when trustee Fox talks about kind of staying in your own lane, it kind of defines the lanes a little bit.
Yeah.
And and I think, I think what I've seen it do in the past in other, in other boards, if if all the, if if the full, if the whole board really accepts and lives out its protocols and norms, and then sometimes, some boards don't. Um, but if when a, if and when a board does like this one, it it helps to, it just kind of helps to create some order and 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 to kind of cement the trust. Um, you know, that when when everybody kind of understands their their spot and the way we deal with one another and the way, you know, not just board to superintendent, or board member to superintendent, superintendent to board, but board member to board member. Um, you know, what what can be expected and and how are we going to live and work together? Um, I think it just creates for a much more harmonious, healthy, professional, grown-up relationship.
Absolutely. Harmonious and professional. Absolutely. Um, and especially when you have five people that you have to really answer to, um, some up to thirteen. Can imagine, I don't know if you can even imagine have, having thirteen um, bosses, if you will.
But what happened to Jesus?
Right. Exactly. It gets difficult. It it's it's difficult to have that big of a body uh, or or heads on a body, I should say, on one body. Um, and that's why it's so important. And it can happen from thirteen, it can happen with five. If you get three people who don't want to, you know, work collaboratively or have a governance mindset, um, then you, you know, the seat that superintendent is in will become a revolving door. And after, after a while, I say to the Board of Education, it's you. It's not, it's not the superintendent. It's it's something's going on with the board. Yeah.
How about the cultural lifestyle?
Say more about the cultural lifestyle.
Well, it's, you you have, you under, you have an understanding of what that that whole culture is. And the kind of life that you you respect and honor. And and where you have a clear understanding where you believe, where you belong, or where you fit in, or 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 how you, how you participate to enable that um, culture to to uh, to rise to that level of uh, success or level of contribution, make the difference.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. And and I'm glad that you said culture, because we, earlier, we've talked about it. We've talked about this uh, previous sessions, just about creating the culture of the district. But we also have to think about the culture of this team. You know, getting to know each other, um, because all of this is going to be connected with building relationships, trusting each other. When you understand my culture, you understand who I am as a human being. Um, and then, you know, yes, the part about us having a mindset and all of that is is absolute, that's the work we do. And just as important to it for us to get there is to um, understand my whole being and how I show up every day. Um, and how perhaps my lived experiences impact the way I engage in conversations about certain topics and or how I uh, vote. You know, but again, that's that building the relationship. Because if you don't have that foundational relationship with each other, it it's very difficult. It's very difficult.
So I have, I have to admit that, I have to, yeah, I have to admit that uh, that um, Superintendent Spalding coming on board is really, is really a change, changing the culture. And I'm glad to know that and really get to respect it. And uh, and and I think the risks that he and I have taken have enabled us to respect that. And uh, so that he's created a a a culture that I'm, I'm very pleased with.
Wonderful. That that's great to hear.
Yeah.
Well, that's great to, for your ears too, as as well, um, Superintendent Spalding.
No, I appreciate. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Yvonne. I really appreciate that.
That is, uh, Dr. Young, you have your hand up.
Um, to me, protocols are are like a um, a learned behavior.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in learning that behavior, like when you're a teacher in the classroom, the very first day of school, you establish a protocol that you want in your room. So uh, the behavior uh, is taught, the procedure is taught, it's re, it's te, it's taught, it's modeled.
Mm-hmm.
And it's practice.
There you go.
For to be a routine. So you can't just have written protocols without practicing it.
Exactly. You have to name it, call it out, and then like you said, model, practicing it, and then you're modeling it. Um, and and call it what it is, you give the rationale, um, add language to it so that anyone picking up a document, if it was on a document, they would understand. And then they could look at, well, let me watch their board meetings and let me see if I see this occurring. Um, you know, and so that that is so important, but I I really like that learned and it's it's modeled a- as you're practicing it. Absolutely.
Yeah. And you know, when it's, when it's established, is when, when you see it mastered in a, in a, in a board meeting, and your board meeting runs very smoothly.
Yes, absolutely. And it and then it will also be tested when there are topics that you are just struggling with, and you could have spirited conversations, but then you always go back to like your board norms, the principles, um, that we are a team, um, and that what, even though I don't agree with if what Christie's saying, I'm not going to have any personal attack toward her because I don't agree with her. I need to listen to her, listen to her, um, speak her truth, if you will, and and a rationale, rationale on what we're, why she's in this position. Um, and so all of those things are happening all at once. And and that's why it's, not everyone is cut out to do this type of work. I I just have to be honest with you. I've worked with so many hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of board members. Not everyone is cut out for this. And sometimes they don't realize it, it'll maybe their third year in a four-year term. You know, because they've been fighting going upstream and just thought, this is what I'm supposed to do. And it and it's not, but what, sometimes you can right the ship, if you will, and once people are informed, that this is the the a best practice type of way to to work collaboratively, you don't have to do it by yourself. You know, yes, you're at the top, you're an elected official, but you can't do all this. You can't even do the work without a superintendent. You, the district can't exist without a superintendent. So we just have to keep those things in in mind when we're constantly working collaboratively together. Um, not saying that you always have to agree, but how do we engage with each other to um, settle the disagreement, or always say, how do we get to a yes? Or that we're, or for the good of the kids, if it's possible to get to a yes, or what's best for children. So, absolutely, absolutely. And so again, you guys went through the process, I believe it was in February of twenty twenty. You remember that? Was it twenty twenty? I believe it was, yeah, February twentieth, just before COVID hit. You know, um, I was spending a lot of time out there in California just before that. Well, before we, yeah, it probably had already been hitting, but we didn't realize it. But um, but we had an opportunity to put together one, two, three, four, five, six. So I'm going to display those in a minute, but just as a reminder, norms are simply descriptions of how board members treat each other, you know, eh, engagement. Norms guide what is acceptable and unacceptable, because remember, if you, if there aren't any agreements here, then someone thinks it could be the wild, wild west, you know, you're not going to be, uh, you won't have those effective meetings. You won't be able to engage with the superintendent. Um, you won't be uh, it able to keep a good superintendent. Uh, those, there are things that will start occurring. And so your assignment, which I'm going, is on, like I said, you bring up, look on page seventy, and I'm going to share um, my other document with you.
It's just on the guidebook? What'd you say, seventy?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And so let me pull that up. Assignment number three. Okay. I'm gonna make this bigger. Can you see that? Can you see the norms? It's a little bit bigger for you. Okay, can you see the norms? Okay? Yes. Okay, so where's your norm, the first one? Um, and so it is pretty much on page seventy of your workbook. The column is actually on seventy and seventy-one. So I just want you to look at these norms and kind of look at, the first one says governance principles. We're, we're not going to look at that. We're going to look at the shaded ones for board, for governance norms. And so I want you to say, based upon this norm that you guys created over a year ago, is it considered emerging based upon the definition that's in the book, in the columns? Is it, are you guys accelerating or have you mastered it? Okay? You see what I'm asking you?
Yes.
And then all I'm going to do is highlight it, because I want to just know which one you're doing. So um, the board will demonstrate effective decision-making in all manner. We will be fully engaged. Uh, we will have opportunities for input. We will use data. Uh, we will make decisions as a whole, not as a representative of, not as a representative of an assigned area. So would you say based upon emerging is the board recognizes the importance of the explicit agreement? Um, or is it accelerating? Governance norms are developed and adopted? Um, or is, are you mastering it? Adopted norms are honored in practice. But where do you think you are?
In regards to the bullet, uh?
Although, yeah.
Those bullets, okay.
Yeah, are you emerging, accelerating, or are, do you feel that you're mastering it? But I don't believe you guys adopted your norms, right? Or did you? Did you do it officially at a board meeting? Okay, you did not. You did not. Um, that's something that you may want to consider. Well, you should consider, because that's the whole purpose, that these are adopted and you sign off on them. And it's like you're, this is how we're going to operate. You have an agreement. And so, so where are you? You didn't adopt it, but if you had, where would you say? Um, how how are you guys doing? Are you emerging, accelerating, or have you mastered this skill?
Emerging, because we don't have a, we don't have them.
Well, I think that we do have them, but I don't know that, they're not posted. And so it's like, I think a lot of us have just internalized what needs to occur. So.
According to this, it says accelerating, and then they're developing adopted.
Well, we haven't gotten that far.
I know.
In regards, if I be, if I could be specific it to to what I stated earlier about my experience with us superintendent, I think it would be between a little closer to accelerating, but it's between emerging and accelerating, the norm that I am uh, picking up on the leadership of our superintendent.
Okay.
I I agree with that.
So that norm that you're picking up on the leadership, I agree with you, Dr. Yvonne. But according to the document that we were asked to do, we have not adopted it. But we're in the process of doing it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But but if you, but if you, if you, I think, uh, Chris, Chris, when Christie alluded to it, I I, she knew what I, what, where I was coming from. This, I was very specific about where hi- hi- our relationship to to the superintendent's leadership, not only with us personally, but with the district itself. That norm is is emerging, it's not completely in in accelerating, but it's to the left of that. And and that's, you know, it it depends, I guess, on how you have experienced the year of the superintendent's uh, leadership. Uh, but I would think it's moving toward accelerating, but we're not there yet.
Right. And and look at the other on page seventy-one, it continues, because of course, they're not stacked on each other. So the other definite bullet point under emerging is ground rules reflected in norms established. A standard of behavior are applied occasionally. And even other than accelerated, most board members strive to listen openly. Um, for trustees with a governance mindset, norms become part of their board leadership. Norms are reviewed occasionally. So that's where you're saying you're kind of in between, because of course, you're not. So what, could every, every, everyone, John, what are your thoughts about that? Where would you rate yourself?
Well, for, I think the first three bullets, I think we we've done excellent as a board.
Mm-hmm.
The fourth one, I think sometimes is a little struggle, but I think we're trying to make sure that one um, goes well for all students. But I think the first three, I see that with our colleagues, that all three of those top three are, I I see that we've, the way we work together and the way we follow our agreements, to me, we're kind of close to mastering. Now, yes, Dr. Young is right, we did not, we we did go through this process last February. Or two Februaries ago, whatever.
We did, we had.
But but we never officially adopted it in a public setting, but yet each, I've seen each of us work towards honoring these. So that's, that, I I feel that everyone has done their due diligence to really work hard to to working towards all of these.
Right. And and that's, that's great. But all the work you guys went through to get to this, because it wasn't an easy feat. We had to really dig deep into what our expectations were of each other and how we want to engage. So the next step is that you guys should adopt these, and it should become your um, special shiny toy that you have with you. You don't throw it in the toy chest, because then you got to dig for it. You always have it, like, it could be your board packets. Um, when you start, are you, you guys aren't meeting, when you started back meeting in public, this is sitting on the DAS. How about that? It's displayed, it's for you to make sure, and yes, it should be, board norms should be on your website once you adopt them. Because again, the community need to see you modeling this. And then they should be able to, they will call you out if you're not. Right? And so again, this will also help you create this culture that we have been talking about. So what is your legacy going to be? You want to make sure that there is a a a positive culture and how you and you conduct the business of Vallejo City Unified School District. And so that anyone else who wants to come in, they they see how you operate. Not that everyone is groupthink, is that there are some parameters and what, and how we operate in a professional way, how we engage, even if we don't agree, I still will listen to the opposing view. And then I will have space. I have my, my voice is going to be heard as well. And so at some point, very soon, you guys should really put this on the agenda. Um, it really should be a document that has signatures at the bottom. And so, it's a, it's a formality, it's a formal thing, everyone signs. And then you make sure that these are, um, you have adopted them. Um, put a date on the bottom, just like you do anything else, like a resolution or anything else, so that if you need to go back in and tweak, make any major changes, then you can. But this is just something that's not just to be policing people with, it's just a, a reminder when we lose our way sometimes, that, ah, I need to engage with my colleague better, because I'm missing out on what he or she or the superintendent is trying to share. So it's just a, a, a reminder. So I, I, it written on here, I'm going to do a, a, a marking that you're in between there, and, and that's fine. And that, that's fine. Well, let's look at the second one. And the, reading these doc, these bullet points again, the board will establish an environment of professionalism at the board meetings and throughout the district into the community. Will communicate civilly, active listening. Respect each other, and we have selected the superintendent or board president to represent our one voice to, uh, respond to the media. So, how are you doing? How do you think you're doing there?
Are, are we looking at the same, um, rubric?
Yes, you are.
I think we're between accelerating and mastering there. Personally.
And yes, we know they're not adopted, so we're, we're gonna put that, because if, if we, yeah, we know that, because the plan is you're going to.
Right, it's not adopted, but it was official, I mean, it was unofficial, we agreed to it unofficially, I suppose.
Right, right.
We need, we need to, we need to agree on the, the resources, though. Diminishing resources.
Are we there yet? I thought we were doing the one above.
No, we're right here, we're on, we're on the top one, we're right here.
Oh.
Establishing environment.
Okay.
We're on that, don't, don't be jumping ahead, Dr. Yubaldi.
We know you're an AP student, but hey.
He is, he is just that top of the class, just believe in us. And so what do you think about, um, yeah? You communicate, listening, what about the media? Have you have, are you guys okay in that regard, just having one spokesperson? Are you okay? Of course superintendent and the board president.
I think it's really the superintendent. I think we agreed upon that differently, didn't we? At one point, we talked about communications, particularly with the, I guess maybe that, yeah, to the media. Really should come from the superintendent.
I hope so.
Yeah.
So, some, but this is the or, so are you okay with leaving the board president in there in case it needs to be? Um, because if it's a board issue, the superintendent doesn't speak for the board.
No, that's true.
Speaks, speaks for the district. So it could be, some, you know what I mean, it could be a situation where it's board-focused, and superintendent's not gonna like, talk to the board president.
I'll give you an example, so when Adam left, the, the media was on me, asking me for information. The media, even, the media was even after me, and where he was going. And Contra Costa asking me questions. So it was both Vallejo and Contra Costa. So as president at that time, that, because he was going, he was gone, he was leaving. So that's an example of when, or if. So, I think the or is good, I, I think the or is good in there. And I agree with Christie, I think we're close to mastery, yes, we haven't officially, but unofficially, we have followed all of these.
Okay, awesome, just gonna do this right here, on the way. Do over there. Okay. All right, let's do this, this one right here. The board will have a realistic mindset of the current realities of the district. And being mindful of our diminishing resources. Trust our superintendent, no micromanaging, respect his decisions, mutual respect. Willing to deliberate with an open mind. Okay, so Dr. Yubaldi, you said something about, uh, first of all, tell me where you guys feel you are, you emerging, accelerating, are you in between? Where are you?
I think we mastered it, because Bill has done a good job in delivering the district. Out of its, uh, forty years of, 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 of going around, around, and around, and around, we finally see a light.
Did you guys agree?
Well, I think also the key words are the current reality. And our current reality this last year and a half has been a world pandemic with COVID. So, since we wrote this, the world's reality has changed, not just ours.
Exactly.
And how we've dealt with that reality, I feel, has been exceptionally, because, because we're just rolling with the punches day by day, or I remember hour by hour. Uh, because things just changed each day, but I think we've done the best we can at all levels, Bill and the board. So, um, it, it's diminishing resources, we've also are looking at resources for learning loss through the Escher and the gear, and so we're, we, we've been thrown a lot with these items.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I don't think we do micromanage, so I, I feel like Dr. Young said, um, I think we're close to mastery on this one as well, maybe not officially, but unofficially, we, even through a pandemic, I think we've, we've worked on all of these, my own personal view.
Outside of, the, I, I cannot buy into it yet, because I, there's only one example that I, that I heard in regards to diminishing resources. I mean, we have, we have more, we have more fin, uh, monetary grants and funding than I've ever experienced since I've been here.
But diminishing res-
Excuse me?
I was gonna say diminishing resources could be the teacher shortage.
Declining enrollment.
Struggle getting teachers, we, you know, um, actually, the student, um, leaving the district, that's kind of diminishing resources for the ADA. Um, and, and that also reflects back on, I mean, the current reality also includes the past reality that was not verbalized as far as the declining enrollment. You know, that was kind of like back there in the corner, you don't talk about losing five hundred students every year. Um, so I, I think that we've, I agree with John, I think that we're very close to mastering this. We have, uh, we're more realistic now in what we're doing and, and how we're moving forward than we have been since I've been on the board, I mean, that's only been three years, but I think we're, we're, we're doing well in this area.
And the student loan, the, the, the state loan, we're almost ready to pay the state loan off.
Exactly.
So, we, I mean, that's extremely, early, early paid the state loan off.
Right.
From state receivership, so I think there's many examples, um, anyway.
Yeah, and the key thing is, is that we will be mindful, and you guys have, we have demonstrated that, absolutely. Uh, Dr. Young and then Superintendent Yubaldi.
Um, well, the key to, to, to us, me saying that, or we are kind of all agreeing, we are agreeing that we're mastering, is the leadership that Bill came with. Bill came with the knowledge and the leadership in order to, um, uh, deliver us from, um, the forty years of going around and around in circles. He had the resources, he had the mindset, he had the vision, and he was very articulate on which way it should go.
Mm-hmm.
So therefore, having that, it was easy to follow, because we knew that he had researched, it was data-driven, and that he would be fully responsible for it, and, uh, when he delivered it. That's what I, that's why I feel that we have mastered this particular one, even though maybe that not be written, I don't know, but anyway. That's the way I personally feel, I hope the board feels the same way. But hey, I've watched it, I've watched, I've had two different, um, I've had ten superintendents to watch, but this was just astounding to watch, how he manipulated and what he knew and where to go and how to do it, and he wasn't afraid to ask questions. So that's why I feel that, that's why we moved so far and quickly into that mastering mode.
And, and this is why, based upon what you guys have all stated on, um, yes, we're giving you accolades now, Superintendent Yubaldi, while you can hear them, even though, you know, you may not be feeling, feeling good, I was gonna check in, see, do you need to stand up? Uh, but we wanna make sure, you, I want you guys to remember this. Because that show, and he has demonstrated that, number one, I think he knows how to be the superintendent, right? I think he knows if there is a little ruckus going on over here that we see might be an issue, I'm gonna step back, because I think he's experienced enough to know how to handle that. And so this is where you guys are feeling comfortable doing that, and that is great. And that doesn't mean, just like the superintendent that we mentioned before, don't allow anyone in the community or just outsiders anywhere make you feel like, oh, don't be getting so comfortable with him, he's getting a little bit too far out, being, thinking that he's, he's, he's the head guy, um, you know what? He is. He is the education expert. And so, because he's demonstrated it. So, you guys, I, I'm just telling you, you're in a good position, you're in a situation where you have someone sitting in that seat who knows how to be the superintendent, and he wants to keep you informed, not trying to do I gotchas, because this board's not going, going to allow that either. You want to be informed, but you also want to support him to be successful. Because when your superintendent is not successful, people look at the board, well, were you not clear what you expected your employee to do? You know, and so that's why we have to make sure that you're doing your due diligence to give him the space and the grace to do his job, whether sometimes he misses the mark, but he comes back to say, you know what? Didn't have all of the right information, or we didn't have the right people in the right place, or I need to do some shifting to make it a better fit, so that we can get from point A to point B. That's how a collaboration looks when the board is working with a superintendent, that they want to be successful. Because when he's successful, the, the, the principals, the teachers, and the children are going to reap the benefits. Superintendent, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say all shocks, um. I really, yeah, I really appreciate all the, all the compliments, and, and thank you, Dr. Young, for, um, you know, even weaving in a little bit of biblical, uh,
The forty days.
Into that.
We, we need that. No, there you go.
But I want the, I want the board to take some credit here, you know, they, I, I mean, I, I arrived last November second, and I, I named an interim chief business officer probably two, three weeks later. And, y- you know, we did some, you know, some work with some recommendations, but this board in January came together and took five million dollars out of our budget.
Okay.
And a- as tough as that is, and, and as, as sad a duty as that is, this board didn't flinch, did not flinch. And the board has passed resolutions when it's been called on to do so, to say that with continuing declining enrollment and continuing diminishing resources, they will, they will continue to make whatever, um, whatever downsizing needs to occur, they, they will do it, and they've proven that. And, and I think it's important for this board to know that there's a lot of respect and confidence, because remember, we, we also, there's also another higher power we serve, um, that'd be the county office, they go through our budget, through AB twelve hundred, and have a lot to say, and can reject a, a budget if they want to. And the feedback that I get back from them pretty consistently is this board and this, they haven't always been able to say this, but they're able to say it about this board, that this board will do what is necessary and be good stewards and will, and will handle their business. And so, um, I would also vote that this is an area where, where we excel, but I think the board should take plenty of credit for that, because it's, it's, I can bring all, I can bring all the recommendations I want to. Um, a- and, and you may or may not go along with them. And I've been in districts where staff brought recommendations, and the board did flinch. Um, you know, so at the end of the day, it's your courage that carries the day, so I just, I just wanna make sure that you're, you all are taking credit as well.
Awesome, thank you for that. Dr. Yubaldi?
I just want, want to underline the current reality of the district.
Okay.
I think, uh, among all the superintendents I've had, I think Bill is the most, uh, in, uh, informed, well, we're the most informed, uh, trustees, because of his, uh, helping us understand the reality, the current reality that we have. And it just stands out so bold, boldly, as I look at those, those bullets and the, the top part. Now, the question I have is that, i- i- why, why are the X's to the right of the mastering? I mean, that, that seems so conceded on our part to be where we are. Can, can, could not be on top or to the right of it, that's, that seems kinda, uh.
When we put it under it?
On top. Not, not to the right of it.
Where would you like it?
The right, we're, we're right in the heart of it, not, not to the left or to the right. If you can, I'm, I don't wanna cause it.
No, I don't wanna mess it up. Yeah, I know what you're saying, though. When I actually put the document together, I'll put it under, yeah, more mastery. Um, because everything now is just to the right, to the right of emerging, in between, uh, so yeah. But I think you guys are right there, though, uh, that's, uh, you guys demonstrate that, so it's okay, give yourself some credit. So here's the other norm, and then we have two more after this. The board will have regular communication meetings, and you guys are doing that, right? Your president will meet weekly, two board members will meet with the superintendent, or one board member, um, and you'll rotate, so I understand that you guys are doing this, right? Go, Dr. Young.
Mastering. We do all above.
Yeah.
On a regular basis.
You do.
On a routine. Let's put it on a routine. So I would say we're mastering it. In order to do, in order to do the work that we need to do, and why we're so effective, is because that protocol was in place.
Yeah. And it sounds like, based upon the conversations we had yesterday, that this is working for you guys, you feel more informed, you have an attitude, and, and this also simultaneously gives you a chance to get to know your superintendent. You know, and also understand more of his knowledge base. You know, he's more than what's on his resume, you know? Um, a- and so, yes, I, this has worked for you guys, I can tell. Absolutely.
Uh, uh, Deborah, on the, on the first bullet.
You put the X's up there, I, I.
On the first bullet, I, I invited the vice president to be part of our this meeting with the superintendent.
Because I, I was trying to put an X up there and it wouldn't work.
Oh, you were. It's a live document, you can't.
Okay, I was gonna say, oh, okay.
So the board president and the vice president.
Yeah, I intentionally invited him, because I felt that it's very important, because in case, in case the vice of the president could not make it that week, and he's fully informed.
Well, I was trying to figure out whether it was Halloween or not, it was a trick or treat. It was one of the two.
Oh, no. So the vice pres, so both of you meet with the superintendent?
Yes, but not weekly, but, uh.
Yeah, and so superintendent, how, how does this working for you? This, this is a good, good, um, uh, proto, a norm to have, a, a protocol?
I, I, you know, I like it, and, and I think we establish these meetings even kind of independent of, of this language, because it's not something we have really posted anywhere. But, um, but it's working out really well, and I, 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 I think, I hope that it's working out for the board as well, I, you know, try to use those opportunities to, you know, respond to any questions or concerns that come up on the agenda, so this usually is in the days that lead up to a regular board meeting. But it's also an opportunity to hear from, from each board member, you know, what their concerns are, you know, what, what's, what's out there. Any question they have, what's, you know, what's the scuttlebutt, you know, what, what are the, you know, what are, what are the kind of the, you know, the heads-ups that are out there, and, and just to talk about maybe longer-range stuff. Um, but I, I think, you know, trustee Fox talked a little bit last night about, you know, how the, the opportunities that we should, we should have more regularly to, um, you know, to interact and, and talk amongst, you know, for the board to talk amongst yourselves, and I think we can do that, we think we can build that in to the agenda, but I, I find that this is an opportunity for me to kind of congeal the thinking of, of this group of people, and, and really kind of, you know, move forward with, with an understanding of where people are, and as, as eclectic and diverse as this group is, they, they are very solid, and- and have a very common view on a lot of things, and especially the things that count. Um, and so it makes my job a lot easier, I've got a board like this.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Yes, John?
Um, there's a misunderstanding. Um, the first bullet is meaning that the president works with the bo- the superintendent weekly on all issues, if there's a board meeting or not a board meeting. The second bullet is where we all meet, where it says prior to a board meeting. So where President Uvalde said, and vice president, he's referring to he and the vice president meet together prior to a board meeting to discuss the agenda. That should be on the second bullet. That's not part of the first bullet. The first bullet just is talking about that it's an expectation that the board president, I remember I was talking, you know, at six thirty in the morning to the superintendent, starting AM in the morning throughout the night many days, when COVID started, I mean, all the time. So that's just was an expectation of the pre- of the president. The second bullet is for all of us prior to meetings.
So where, so you want me to put in there the board, two board, so it doesn't matter if it's the board president or the vice president, you don't, I don't have to...
It doesn't matter what two, if, if someone feels better, I mean, I mean, some, there's five of us, so one has to be by themselves.
Thank you for that clarity. That makes sense. So either, whatever two. Uh, but I thought it was addition when Dr. Uvalde said he invites the board president. I thought that was his meeting, weekly meeting. I mean, the vice president.
No, that was prior.
Prior to the board meeting.
You wanted me to add prior up here, the first bullet?
Yeah. No, no, it's already there in the second bullet.
It's in the second one, so I just want... Yeah, it's right here. It's right here. So, and so this is correct, the way it is?
Yes.
Okay. I remember you guys, cuz John, I think you were the board president when we did this, right?
I don't remember.
I believe so, yeah.
No, you were. Um, maybe it was, this was January twenty twenty that we did this.
Bob, I think.
Yeah.
Cuz Adam was still, yeah, it was Bob, cuz Adam was still, oh, wait, I don't know. I don't remember.
No, you were, John.
I was, okay.
You were.
It's a blur.
Maybe we should, cuz currently, do you, Bill, meet with the, with Tony on a weekly basis, or just, is it just before? Because maybe that should say, um, that the board president will be on call for, because sometimes he, he needs to be involved. Like you were, John, with the pandemic, when issues come up, it's the board presidents that's called, not the board members.
We, we don't, we don't currently meet every week. We do that agenda development that Dr. Uvalde spoke to, but we, we're in, I bet with phone calls and texts, we're in touch at least once a week and even more so, yeah.
Well, meet or, or communicate weekly?
Communicate weekly, absolutely.
And as we know now, with the pandemic, things change, so you, you just don't know.
Right, right. Well, and again, we wanna make it where it's, um, so anybody in the seat that it fits, fits for them, cuz this, these are norms for the whole team, not specific to any individual. So it just sounds like it's good, the board president and the superintendent should communicate one way or another weekly, cuz there is something going on, whether it's just a quick update or a text message, however you choose to, to communicate. Okay. Let's look at this one. The board will communicate positively and high, uh, will communicate positive, positively, positivity and high expectations for all stakeholders. We will have high expectations for the board members administrators for, pretty much for everybody. We will create the board and district culture, and that's what you're doing, right? Where, where do you think you fall? Where would you like to, me to place the Xs?
Well, this is, um, the goal, but again, with the pandemic and all the curveballs we get with things that have happened, we, we're doing the best we can considering.
Yeah. Closer to, from, between emerging and accelerating.
Really. That's where I would place it.
Yeah.
But that's...
I don't know if you ever, I don't know if you ever get in a, on the end zone in, in this one, you know, I, I, I think you keep, keep pushing this. Cuz I know this is one of the goals that, this is one of the pillars that the board established wanting to join a couple of new pillars to the three existing LCAP goals. So this is still, this remain, this is a goal
Yes.
Board, um, for the strategic plan.
Okay, good. Well, I'm just gonna drop these here for now, it would closer, but that's a goal. That's awesome.
And at the time, we weren't even, we, it's before the equity discussions. So I know these are not gonna discuss or have the word equity, but, um, I don't know if we'll plug that word in, cuz that's a newer part of our direction, but maybe we don't need to worry about that right now.
Because these are just your, how you're operating, you know? When you have an equity policy in place, you will have all of that, you know? Um, okay. And so the, the, the last one, the board will receive your material. So how is this going? Are you guys getting your items? We're creating an agenda with no more than two, two items on them, items listed, study sessions at least once a month if needed. Uh, we're, uh, we will be better informed board members, so.
Bill has done, Bill has done excellent on this. We've, we've get so much communication, we know what's happening. At least that's so. I, I feel because that Bill drives this, I feel very informed.
What say you guys? Wanted that mastering?
I don't know. We used to get a lot of forms and papers and items, but we did not have the the collegiality and the, the, uh, strong relationship with a superintendent. And yet, now we have lesser, but we're able to be closer and work a lot more, uh, in, in solidarity. So that, that's, it's, it's kind of strange observation there. But, but we're getting more done and we're, and so it's not a matter of how many paper you get.
Right.
It's the quality of the dialogue, I think.
Of the dialogue.
It's the impact that, that, uh, uh, this, this superintendent has made. I, I like to talk like he's not here, okay, if you don't mind.
I know, act like he's not here. So remembering that mastering, you know, you consistently reflect on a cohesive culture. You, it's mutual respect, so I'm, you know, the norms are integral to the culture and part of who, you know, the way we do things. And it sounds like, you know, you guys really got it to, you know, with, with these, uh, with your meeting materials. And, well, for, I mean, for your study session, so. I would say we're gonna be close to mastering yours, and it's still, you don't arrive at it, you're just in a good place with this, right?
I feel kinda bad that Tony isn't here to share this wealth of information
Yeah.
that we're all experiencing.
And he's being penalized. He's got a homework assignment to do.
Did he have another meeting?
Yeah, he had an, another engagement he had to, to go to, that he couldn't get out of, so. So, yeah, so again, I'm creating these documents when I end up, you know, just kind of sharing with you guys any minor changes. But this is another thing that you can have a good study session on, to just kind of talk about if we want to add anything else to it. But again, you wanna keep it broad enough or, you know, and make sure that anybody picks it up that they understand, because this is what, this is for you guys, how you are going to engage with each other. And then, you know, prepare it for signature and, and adopt it at one. It'd be great to do it by the end of the year, Mary, you know, enjoy it for the holidays. Okay? Alrighty, so I'm going to stop sharing this document. And there you are. So, we're moving right along. You guys are gonna do all the assignments. Go ahead, John.
So you'll send that to Ken or to Bill, so that we can get it into a, um, a format where it can have signatures to, to move forward?
I sure will. Absolutely, absolutely. And so, as we're moving along, um, let's see, what else did I wanna share with you? We have another, hold on, my documents here. If you look on page, this is in your workbook, page seventy-nine. Seventy-nine. And I'm gonna pull up another document for you. Yeah, this is... Yep, that's the one. Let me just make this big enough for you to see it. Okay. I'm going to, let me see if I can make this bigger for you. Can you see this document? Christie, can you see your name? Yes. You're the first one. And so what I want you to do, with about, you know, we have about forty more minutes left, what I want you to do is just, each of you, I'm gonna scroll through, so Christie, you see you have strategic or setting strategic direction. What I would mention to you on page seventy, uh, this is seventy-nine, I just want you to jot down what you're going to share with the group, okay? So, Christie, you have setting direction. John, you have policy direction and approval. Okay, you have B. Um, Dr. Young, you have stewardship and support. That's C. If you look at on your workbook in seventy-nine, on your workbook, and this is, um, superintendent, you have D. You have, um, oversight and accountability. And Dr. Uvalde, you have community leadership throughout. Okay? Don't forget your assignment right now. So what I want you to do in those topics right there are also, now I'm looking in the small handbook, you probably are already there. Let me just pull up, oversight. It, that begins on page one twenty-three in your small book, just so that you have them next to each other. One twenty-three in this book, yep, that's where they begin, all the topics. So what I want you to do, like Christie, you read your section, setting direction, strategic direction, and kind of summarize what's the evidence of implementation that is happening. And then what are some strategies to deepen that implementation?
Okay, so I, I read this part, and then, and, and then make reference to what we're currently doing.
Right, and, right. And so the activity is really just to, what is the evidence of implementation and setting strategic direction? What's happening in your district? What's some of the evidence? And you guys have been spewing off examples. Those are your evidence. And then if there's one or two bullets that you would think, how do we go a little bit deeper? I mean, so you don't have to have a lot, just put maybe two, two bullet points of what's the evidence. Um, and then maybe two bullet points of the strategies, if you need to go a little bit deeper, okay? So I'm going to give you, um, fifteen minutes. So, at, um, at seven thirty, seven forty, seven forty. So you can just mute your mic and, or, and sit there and, you turn off your camera if you want to. So at seven forty, we're gonna come back together. So I need you to be able to describe to your colleagues what setting strategic direction is, what are, one or two bullets of the evidence, and then how can you deepen it? Okay? And you could kind of jot that all in, in your book, so you'll be able to be very succinct when you say it, cuz I'm gonna try to type it, um, as you're going. Okay? Are you guys good? Cuz I'm building a document for you, so just put your, put your mics on mute and we'll come back at seven forty. One minute left and great, we're all coming back. So I decided I'm not going to scribe. I'm going to have you guys send Ken your notes. Because I don't, I want to really do justice to having the conversation, rather have the conversation. So each of you just kind of share with your colleagues. And when you send the information to Ken, he'll send it to me. Um, and I'm, again, I will build these documents for you. And then what I will do too is have, um, give your other colleague, Mr. Gross, a chance to chime in on, on some of the other documents as well. So you could have his, his view. So Kristi, you take a few minutes in the last twenty minutes we have. Take a few minutes to kind of share with your colleagues about setting strategic direction.
Okay. There were several like passages that I want to read that really kind of explain things. And the first one is that setting direction is moving from a conceptual understanding of the moral imperative to a well-developed, transparent, and highly focused set of policies and strategic goals. And I think that that's, we're, we're working up to that. Um, it's an ongoing, almost organic function of governance. All the strategic planning, community engagement, and professional dialogue mean little if the board does not take action by adopting well-developed, easily understood, measurable strategic goals and success indicators designed to achieve the moral imperative. Setting direction is about charting a course into the future that will equip children with the skills and knowledge, not only to succeed, but also to excel to the best of their abilities. It is in charting this course that systems thinking, strategic focus, and deep learning are essential. Part of the challenge for the board is to maintain its critical, long-term focus while also comprehending the rapidly changing dynamic world we live in. So this means to me that it has to be a living document and we need to be ready to change things when things change in the environment that we're living in. And then the last two, yeah, the last is that a highly successful, purposeful superintendence finds substantive ways to engage their boards early in the strategic development process, getting their input and direction, and developing ownership so that by the time of the official adoption, there are no surprises. And with this, I, I can remember back to the very first meeting that we had with you, Deborah. Well, I asked, can we ask for a strategic plan? And you said, absolutely. And that night I asked if we could have a strategic plan, if we could work on a strategic plan for the district because we did not have one. There was not a lot of work that went on after I asked that. We voted not to have it because it would cost too much money. And then Bill came along. And thank God for Bill. Because the minute that was mentioned to him, it's like the lights went off. He was engaging all of us. It was, it was wonderful. I mean, I, I, I've been living for this strategic plan for three years. Finally coming to fruition and I'm so excited. And I think that what we've done towards the implementation is Bill has a, he's doing a lot of stuff with data and laying down the data systems that are going to be critical in order to employ whatever strategic plan that we develop. We've, he's in contact, he's been in contact with the facilitators. We have a contract with them. They're getting the community groups ready. You know, he's, he's, we've been involved in the process up until this point, communicated with, told what's happening. Um, and we're supportive. I mean, and that's the biggest thing that we can be right now is supportive of Bill as he does his work. And listening in on to what, what the community is going to have to say. What we can do, I think, to deepen the implementation is to have discussions either via Zoom or Google or on the dais and talk about what's going on, what, what, what are the comments with the community? You know, what's the report? And just having ongoing discussions so that the community can know more about what's going on. And the board will be up to date on whatever meetings that have taken place and which, which one of the board members has attended the meeting. It's kind of like a report from them. They can all be current as to, to what is happening.
And that is, that's perfect. Because when the strategic plan should always, will now going forward be agenda item, where it's information that the community can hear. So you do have those open discussions. So absolutely, you nailed that. Thank you. You nailed that. Wonderful. Keep that captured and you send it off to pick. Everything. Okay, John, you're up next.
Okay, mine is, and mine's my, mine's more important than this teaching, teaching plan, Kristi. And let me tell you how and why. So mine is policy direction and approval. Definitely being cognizant of the how and the what. And this is where the trustee governance mindset is essential. Having a well-developed systems perspective and strategic focus combined with a firm shared commitment to the moral imperative and strategic goals keep the board grounded and focused. So there's two main areas for policy direction and approval. The first area is our fiduciary responsibility. And that goes into what I was just talking about. The financial health of the district. And this is ultimately what we're accountable for, both to the state and to our community. And that the district stays physically solvent. We have to have our plans in place, our, all of our budgets, our meetings. And this is what I was referring to. The district's budget is the reality of policy document, excuse me, equal to, if not more important than, the district's strategic plan. The budget drives the resources and profoundly affects the actual implementation of the district's priorities and strategic goals. So if you don't have them allocated to be able to do what you want, you say you're going to do, then it's not going to happen. And there's a line in here that says, if it's not on the budget, it's not going to happen. So basically, we have to just, we, we improve this. So in the column, evidence of implementation. We had our study session on budgets, on our current budget from Rosa. We have quite, quite a few of them. We had one recently, we've approved our budget. We've approved reductions. Hold on. We've tracked what's going on in our district with our budget through Rosa and through different site sessions and through our board meeting, our constant updates. The next area for policy direction and approval is adopting program plans and frameworks. And these, you have to have, and this one kind of really hit. Adoption of the district's curriculum framework and instructional program is the most direct way the board can engage issues in depth around its moral imperative. I was like, wow. Then it goes into examples that, different examples of things that we do approve and we have to go through and adopt as a board. And those include approval of frameworks for human resources, our bargaining agreements, our facilities use plans, our transportation plan, and our district's food services plan. And all of those, we as a board are required to ask the, the important questions of how they're being implemented. So we're coming back to the how and the what that it began with. How are they being implemented? And what effect or not affect, what, what is happening to that? And it comes back to our plan. It's about connecting all the dots. This is a systems thinking at work is basically the sum up of policy directions and approval.
And approval. All right. Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, Kristi, gave you a run for your money there. All right, Latanya, Dr. Young. Stewardship and support.
Okay, um, I took that square as being, we walk, we walk the walk and we talk the talk. And we make sure that we model it as we're doing it in order to, in order to make sure that it's consistency in what the vision and the policies that we are, are overseeing are being distributed to the community. A part of the community. Um, we model the norms and protocols. We articulate the organizational value as we walk the walk and talk the talk. So, um, we support the decision. We support the decision of, um, we've supported the decision of the, of the, um, what are you, Bill, hey, oh, the superintendent.
It's getting late.
It's getting late. Superintendent, okay. Uh, we, we support the, the decisions of the superintendent because he is, he is our leader and he has the skills and the knowledge to, to guide us. So that's what we have done currently. That was the way I was supposed to go.
That was your evidence. Do you need to go any deeper? Strategies to go deeper on that or?
To go deeper is to continue to, to me, is to, to me, is to continue to rely on the knowledge of the experience of our superintendent. To go, in order for him to be, to, to introduce us to different agendas that will be available to our, our, our journey in turning this district around. Also keep focus on data-driven systems that are being put in place. So that those systems can be held accountable and monitored and checked. Support the policies that further engage our core work for this district.
Absolutely.
I wasn't really clear what we were supposed to do, so I faked that one, okay?
No, you, you, you captured what stewardship and, and support is. You even should add some examples. So even though you forgot the superintendent, but that person in that seat. But that, that's okay. Okay, superintendent, oversight and accountability. What say you?
Well, I don't know if I did it right. I, I kind of did what I did last time, which was to put together kind of a list of all the things we're, we're doing that I think fall into the, you know, the category of oversight and accountability. And I emailed it to you and Ken. So you'll see a bunch of bulleted statements, but there's a lot that's going on in that realm. I went back to, you know, to the book and it talks about the board needs to know if programs are effective. Are the plans working? What progress are we making in achieving our strategic goals? We are not talking about punitive accountability. And we've had this conversation. Punitive accountability is a wrong driver. But rather accountability is strengthening the instructional program through district-wide coherence and continuous improvement. Richard Elmore, one of my favorites, made a key observation when he said, no amount of external accountability will be affected in the absence of internal accountability. So I went on to talk about a lot of the accountability moves that we're making in the district, going all the way from the, the SIR report that comes from the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence, which is the systemic instructional review. That was done a couple of years ago. We, we work on that and work towards the action plan and the goals on a regular basis. And we're, we're working with CCE almost weekly right now, really, on this. And we occasionally bring updates to the board. And we're due to bring one up with the board fairly soon. We work on that. We work on the CSACE, which is a similar plan for special education, for the improvement, special education. We've just engaged in a special education 360-degree external study. And I anticipate that that will be ready for the board to, to see and review in November. We're doing work. We, we got the Forecast Five, the Forecast Five system for, for data crunching. It does everything from financial forecasts and trending and tracking to the trending and tracking of data related to student success. And, and basically every, every measurable item for, for student success. I forgot to include on my list, Deborah, I'm sorry. I already emailed it to you. That we are initiating the, and expanding the NWEA assessment system within our district to, to more regularly assess our students on, on standards. And we have also implemented a monthly meeting that I have with members of the educational cabinet where we do what we call a, a school study review, or a school study team, where we track the progress of every school in the district using, you know, the measures and the, and the, you know, some of the Forecast Five data. I was talking about dashboard data, anecdotal data, qualitative data as we're visiting the schools. And, you know, kind of keep up with how our schools are doing, each one of them, you know, on a monthly basis. So there's a lot going on in the, in the realm of, of oversight and accountability. And it talks a lot in this chapter about evaluation. That's there too.
That's, I'll say key evaluation.
Other things that we're doing. Sometimes, you know, I think to myself, gee, are we doing enough to be accountable? Are we really, are we really, you know, structuring accountability? Then as I just started rattling off all the things that we're working on, I thought, wow, we're, we really are paying attention to accountability. I think the key right now is to bring these things in a coherent, clear way to the board on a regular basis where they can see all this. And we can share, what does this mean? You know, where are we today as opposed to where we'll be two months from now? As opposed to what we'll be two months after that. And of course, strategic plan, which is also in, in process.
Absolutely. And how does all of this, everything that you're doing, how does it equate to student outcome? Because at the end of the day, everything you're doing, it has to impact students. And so, so Dr. Uvalde, you're going to close us out with talking about community leadership throughout. What does?
I am just so grateful that you chose this for me.
Yeah.
My thing. My thing. As a matter of fact, it is the heart of moral imperative. That we have that rapport with the community and that relationship. So one needs to help educate and inform the community at the same time to, to lead the community. So therefore, one needs to be available. Okay. And it's, basically it's the dialogue with the community and the heart of the community. It's the, as the book says, it's the talking that walk. Okay. And that basically, basically means be clear and consistent about the main goals and related progress within the district. So, and one needs to be open and authentic with one's communication style. And hopefully humble and, but surely informed.
And informed, yes.
Okay, not evidence of implementation. Our school board meetings is number one, right?
Thank you.
Community. And then we have not had, I get confused sometimes with my other hats that I'm wearing. We have not held any webinars that we, as superintendent.
Webinars, like CSBA webinars?
Yeah, like something that we, we have shared with parents and.
Oh, like videos. We, yeah, we need, we need to get on those.
So that would have been ideal things to, to have people feel, feel that they have ownership. And that's the clear there. Ownership for the district. And then parent teacher council, we, I have participated in that clergy meetings. I sat down with clergy and they always wanted, want to know what in the world is going on. And he said, he said, what is it like to be retired? I talk about that all the time as a pastor. And then of course, VIBA is a big, a big instrument in dialogue with them and how they, we can be helpful with each other with the education, business, and community. And, and then of course, my responsibility with Region Three, CSP Region Three, I inform people about what's happening in my school district. And let me see, but the most important thing is the, having the ability to listen to the input of the community. Very, very, very clear. So we got to be careful that we don't interrupt them when they're talking.
Right. Listen to them because they want to be heard and they elected you to represent the need, their educational needs. Absolutely.
And then this is the strategies to deepen implementation. And this is something that I need. Because I'd really need to be more educated and informed about the data. They're always asking me numbers, you know, and I say, I don't have it right now, but I'll be happy to give that to you. So that's, that's how we deepen that, that.
Absolutely.
I, how did you know this is something I would love?
I just tried to pick out personalities and figure that, and I, you, you probably wear this, so I, I know.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I, I appreciate everyone's contribution to it. You know, to kind of, you're going to get data because just what your superintendent just shared, what he's going to be giving the board, that's, that is amazing information. That helps you be well-informed so that you can engage with your community so that you are telling the good things that are happening. You don't want anyone to tell your story. You tell your own story. And so you want to be able to do that through the superintendent.
I participated in the waterfront event about, about two weeks ago. And, and after I, I began to blessings to the ships, boats actually. You know, I was just sitting around there, lying down and talking to various people. I had people talking to me. They said, tell me about what's happening when, you know, they see you and hey, they want something. And some of them are parents that I don't even know. But they wanted to know about the future for, for their children.
Because they want to know that you're doing it within the best interest of, for their precious jewels, you know, their gems. Absolutely. So thank you again for participating in that. And again, you will keep this book and have it as a tool for you. And even in chapter eight, it talks about those discussion meetings that Christie, our overachiever there, talked about yesterday. You can have these discussion meetings. Think about, do you have a handbook? Your board self-evaluations, every year you can do that through having a retreat or just evaluate to see how you guys are faring. Continuing your, your board, your, your education, you know, and also look in chapter nine when it talks about rising to the occasion. It gives you tips for board members and gives you tips for the superintendent as well on how to navigate through all of this thing that we call board governance. And so we have come to a close. We finished this whole book. And, and it has been such a joy and, and I am honored and privileged to be, to have worked with you again going through this book study. And so I am still going to always be your thought partner. You can reach out to me. I will still, I will put documents together for you, put them in your Google folder for you. And, and then you guys can just think about continuing your education sometime in 2022. Because there's always going to be something and you can just determine what, what that is. And I just hope I have an opportunity to continue to engage with you and provide professional learning opportunities. So again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to work with you over the last couple of years. And I look forward to opportunities in, in the future. So I will turn this back over to President Uvalde.
We're just going to let you know that this is worth at least two terms of what I've learned in my first two, really. I mean, they, this is something that, you know, I, I have, I'm a big graduate like Christie and others. But this is very, very helpful because it is in-depth. You know, and, and, and Dr. Young is very, very lucky to be introduced to this, this early in her, in her career. So we thank you, ma'am, for giving us the, the opportunity to, to work with you, be in dialogue with you, and holding us accountable. Thank you.
My pleasure.
And we'll see you November 8th, Monday.
Yes, sir. Right. That's right. Yes, I get to see you guys again.
And in person.
Buy a property in Bay Area so you could just, you know.
Get me to live there.
We don't have a retreat in November?
Yeah, the Equity Retreat. The Equity, the Equity Session on November.
Swann County.
Yeah, we're just zooming all over the place. That is.
Okay.
See you in December too.
I will see you in December. At CSBA.
Christie, have a wonderful weekend.
Yeah. That's right. That's right.
Be adjourned, folks. We, we, we're still in session.
Christie's, Christie's daughter's getting married.
All right. Eddie, that's your reports, superintendent.
That's my report. And once again, appreciate all of you and appreciate this board. And I appreciate the continuous learners that you are. And thank you, Deborah, for, for being our guide. And this has been terrific. Thank you.
Okay. Any reports from the board?
I, I just want to thank Deborah for doing this. And it's, it's so nice that we learn and we can apply that knowledge to the current situation that we're in. And your history with us, I think, helps a great deal. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
CSBA contracted that you had? Deborah?
For?
To, to do workshops?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Equity Network.
Okay, Dr. Young?
Deborah, I want to thank you because all the knowledge that I've gotten through all this, 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 all this work.
Yes.
Yeah, it was like going back to school.
Yes, it is with me.
It was okay because I learned a lot. I learned a lot from my colleagues, my trustee board members and sisters that I probably never would have learned if I hadn't sat down with you and gone through the process. Thank you so much for being so knowledgeable of the process and taking us through this. It was a, it was a very good journey down a yellow brick road. We still haven't gotten to the Wizard of Oz, but we're working on it.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Forty days, Dr. Young.
Forty days are forty days.
All right, that's the trustee fox.
Thank you, Deborah, and looking forward to see you on the 8th and in December. And also I do have a clarification question, just to make sure that I get my portion in. So we're supposed to type up our little blurb on what we reported and send it to you and Kenneth is?
You can send it all to Ken and who forwards it to me. If you guys have my email, you can definitely send it directly to me. But if, if not, and I've sent you enough documents, you should have my email, but.
When do you want that? By like, by next week or this weekend?
Is that okay? End of the week? Well, you already wrote it down, right?
Right.
I don't want it to.
No, I was so good, I did it from my head.
Okay. No later than, no later than Monday. I'll give you some time.
Okay.
But make sure you answer all those three, you know. Send it to me by Monday.
Okay. That's good. Okay, announcement of upcoming meetings. That's our regular board meeting, Wednesday, Wednesday, correct?
Wednesday, November 3rd.
Oh, wait, today, yeah. Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
We have our equity training for the.
November 8th.
November 8th.
November 8th, okay.
Okay. All right. Thanks so much. This is fun.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Did you get the call from the doctor, Bill?
I did, I did. Well, I, I should be, I should be feeling better very soon.
Wonderful.